School committee meeting to order. This is a budget workshop. It is Tuesday, November 12th. This is being recorded by WCTV and audio recorded by KJ Wixson. Again, this is a budget workshop. We invited a board of selectmen and the finance committee here today. We're grateful that we have two members in the finance committee here to hear the presentation and offer their perspective, so thank you for coming today. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Deinger.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Please feel free to have some snacks. Thank you to our food service department for providing that. So what we... Well, first of all, I'm Matt Deandrea, Superintendent of Schools. This is Kristen Flynn, Finance Director. Scott's over there. He's going to come up a little bit later. I also want to start off by just saying, you know, the town's been tremendously supportive of the schools since I started two years ago, and I just wanted to say thank you. Thank you, guys, for being here, and thank you for your support over the last couple of years, many years, I'm sure. Today, we're going to present a level service budget. If we were to carry over what we currently have this year, this school year into next school year, accounting for fixed costs such as contractual agreements, what would that look like? And there's a few assumptions that we made in order to do that. For utilities, we're using the actuals that we're encountering currently. We were adding steps and lanes and colas for our union contracts. For out-of-district placements, our students attending collaboratives in private schools, we added 3.67%. And we also added $200,000 to salaries in order to staff the annex across the street. So those are some of the additions that we've included.
Matt, you may want to tell the finance committee that the amount you added for out-of-district is mandated, that increase is controlled by the state, not by us.
Correct, correct. Okay, so this... Let's see here. There we go. Okay, so this is the agenda. What we did is we broke it out by cost centers. I'll start off going over the central office of the district-wide budget. Then we have the high school. We'll do a presentation of high school principal, middle school principal, elementary school principal. Beyond school time, which is our after-school and summer programs. Curriculum, student services, which is special education, facilities, technology, and transportation. And the admin in charge of each of those will present the information on each. So, yeah, let's put it right here. So this is the org chart for central office. Superintendent, and I have an administrative assistant, Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction, and she also has an administrative assistant. Then we have Director of Technology, Director of Finance, Director of Student Services, which is primarily special education, and Director of Beyond School Time. The Director of Technology I have in red because that position is being eliminated at the end of December for budget cuts, saving money. That will then fall under the Assistant Superintendent's umbrella when that position is eliminated. And then you can see underneath each of those directors, the positions that fall under our Director of Technology, we have a network manager, a data coordinator, and four IT specialists. They are stationed in the schools. Director of Finance oversees facilities, fields, and grounds, transportation, and food service, and also has three bookkeepers. Special Ed or Director of Student Services has an out-of-district coordinator and administrative assistant, and that also includes our EOL, which we have about 30 or so EOL students. And then the Director of Beyond School Time has an administrative assistant and oversees the night school, our PAS program, CARE, SAIL, and summer programs. All right, so if we look at the district-wide budget, starting off with the admin, I would say the admin section of the district-wide budget, starts off with our school committee expenses. This is school committee member salaries. That was you.
Yeah.
Guys are a little slow in the uptake. So $144,000, that's for legal fees primarily. Salaries, central office admin is the superintendent and finance director. Salaries for administrative assistants include my administrative assistant and bookkeepers, that 360, 3500. Superintendent's office supplies, our memberships for organizations. It includes a paper here at central office and also money to pay for conferences. The business office line is for audits, $16,000 for audits. And then telephone and copier line is for our copy machines and our Zoom phones.
So that salary, that means that's without the technology coordinator? This is next year's salary, so that's not included?
That's correct.
The salaries, that's the base pay or the hourly rate does it include contributions for social security or retirement or health or just the...
That's just the salary?
Yeah.
Just the salary? Yeah, does not include the contribution?
But would include overtime if that's budgeted?
There was a... That's budgeted in a separate line?
Overtime?
Yes.
But importantly, it does not include health insurance?
Or retirement.
Overtime of the budget. All right, so there's not a lot of overtime, and it's included in the salary, not the insurance. Continuing on, district-wide, also falling under is our nursing, nurses and technology. $431,000, that's our nurses and CNAs, our nurses in our buildings, and we also have CNAs that work with students. Our health services, contract services, these are for nurses, $150,000. We have students with such significant needs, they need a nurse on the bus with them, and that we contract out, have those nurses ride the bus. That's at $150,000.
What type of needs? I don't understand why. What needs would require a nurse?
Students that are in wheelchairs, that have, you know, might have a trach, things like that, have seizures or seizure disorders that may need to, you know, if they have a seizure, they have to administer medication, things like that. They're pretty significant needs.
And these are students that attend out-of-district placements on rides of, you know, 30 to 30 minutes to an hour. So, once they get to their placement, there's a nurse there, but it's just that period of time that the student is on the van or the bus that they need to have, it's required that they have a nurse accompany them.
So going to school is in one category, and then once they're at school, it's just that expense shifts to another line?
Correct, correct. But this is precisely why special education is so expensive, because they are protecting the student basically from the time they leave their house. And they're typically on a separate vehicle also, they wouldn't be riding the regular school bus. Health service supplies would be supplies for our nurses. Salaries for district-wide technology would be our network, that 166. That's our network manager and data coordinator. Technology devices are Chromebooks, laptops, chargers, switches, touch views, things of that nature. Contract services, Power School, our Googles, School Bucks, Droplet, all these programs that are used for data management. And our websites, technology, other, you can see there for professional development and memberships and things of that nature. And then district telecommunications, our Verizon phone system here at central office. The facilities part of the district-wide budget, we have custodial salaries. This would be for, this $28,200 is for when we have our custodians do weekend checks of the buildings. They are paid to do that, and they alternate when they do that. Custodial physicals and clothing allowance, $8,000, that's contractual. Our facility salaries line, this is for our facilities director, our HVAC tech and the plumber that we split with the town. Facility supplies, this is for, you know, cleaning supplies, gasoline, things of that nature that is needed for facilities. Fields and ground salaries will, because we have two individuals in our fields and grounds department that take care of the fields, that's their salaries, that 153. And then their supplies and contract services line, that $100,000 goes for snow removal, vehicle repair, irrigation repairs, things like that. Crossing guard salaries, $15,000, in the morning and the afternoon. And then the annex building utilities for $12,500. And then finally, in the district budget, this is kind of miscellaneous, our school resource officer, $50,000, and our human resources, contract services come out of here. Our school security contract services, that $7,000 is our, what's called Navigate 360, which is an app that all our staff can have on their phones, that the police have on their phones, that if there's ever an emergency, that you can use the app to notify everyone in the school or in the district if necessary. Tuition reimbursement for $65,000, that's contractual for teachers. The insurances for students' accident athletics, that's $14,000. Food service employees, an agreement that we have with the town to pay for our food service workers' insurance, which is $160,000. And then, of course, postage, that's the lease of the machine and then the cost of postage. So all said and done, the total district-wide salaries and expenses is at $2.973 million, that part of the budget. I also wanted to touch on the costs of tuition to other schools. The tuitions that we pay in order to send students with significant needs who cannot be educated here in our district is significant. And you can see here, we do send a student to Bristol Aggie, and we have to pay that tuition. Then we spend, we send 16 students to collaboratives, pay the tuition, that's about $1.293 million. And then to private schools is $2.3, almost $2.4 million. So it is significant. It's very impactful on the budget. We always try to keep students in district. It's best for the student, and it's also the most cost-effective for the district. However, there are times in which we can't keep a student in the district. We can't provide the education that the student needs, and we must send them out.
How are the tuition amounts set?
They're set by the schools, by the state, right?
For private, I think, private is, and then there's an increase, so private will allow, and then there's an increase for the private tuitions. There's two types. There's private school and collaboratives. And collaboratives are essentially public schools under the law. They, a lot of times, have classrooms in public school buildings, and they're run by a board of directors that is either our school committee members or superintendents, depending on the charter of the collaborative. And with the collaboratives, they set the rates, and they have to balance it between their own revenues of the tuitions and their own expenses of running the programs. So there's some that have separate campuses, and there's some that operate within school buildings as well.
But then the fees are set by their board of directors?
Correct, for collaboratives, yes.
And it's an agreement between yourself and their board?
Well, the state, the schools also have to be approved by the Department of Education, even if it's a private school. And so they can't, I don't believe that they can just set their tuition at whatever they want and then build off of that. It has to be, you know, within what the department says is a reasonable tuition to cover expenses. And then they allow for, every year, they set how much they can increase their tuition. Other than that, if it's not a department-approved program, then we wouldn't send our student there.
Private schools will have an approved rate, which, as Dr. Deinger said, will increase every year by the rate that the occupational services division sets, and that's at 3.67%. Last year at this time, they published that it was going to be a 14% increase, if you, you know, I don't know if anyone recalls that, but that was...
It was just an estimate.
It was 14. And a lot of times, the collaboratives will be between 3 and 5. And in speaking with the collaboratives, that collaborative that we send the most students to last year and this year, the business manager there said just to plan on what the state rate set is, which is 3.67. Because they don't set their rates until the spring or sometimes the summertime, early summer, late spring, so it makes it difficult for us to budget for that, you know, six to eight months prior to that, to know where they're going to be setting their rates. But like we said, the collaboratives, their board of directors are either school committee members or superintendents.
Okay, that is the district-wide budget. And now we'll transition over to the high school budget.
Could I, I just had a question, one question on what you, something you said about the annex and the expenses for over there. Is that based on use of the building now or your planned use of the building?
That's based on the use of the building now with an increase, a slight increase.
Okay.
But we're so early in the planning, so that is, that is based on now with a slight increase, recognizing that, you know, there will be probably more electricity use, there will be perhaps more demand for heat. But other than that, there is, there's a small increase, but...
It's hard to know. But the building is used now, it's not like it's not being...
Right, right, so it's not, so we do have some, so it is based on primarily what's in use now.
As we transition to Scott, maybe Scott, you could explain to, I think probably members of the finance committee more than us, but why you support the opening of the annex and what it does?
Sure, sure. So historically, the annex was the alternative school many years ago, and unfortunately, with some tight budgetary times, we had approximately eight years ago, the district chose to close down the school, and it was vacant for a period of time, and I think now Turning Point has offices in there. This is for our students that have behavioral concerns, some that have IEPs for social and emotional disorders. But the biggest thing is, we have a group of students that really struggle in large areas such as the high school, and this would allow them to really be in a much smaller area, to really focus on their academics, focus on the behavior, and they wouldn't have the audience of a high school, and they wouldn't have the large area of a high school to kind of get lost in. So it served its purpose for many years, it was very successful. It was really a huge dropout prevention for our high-risk students, and we're hoping to bring that back into play. The tough part is, when you're starting back kind of from scratch, it's tough to get the kids that need to be in there, in there right away. So I envision this being really a three-year gradual phase and process where we start to get some kids in there and then get it to capacity within three years. But I'm excited to be able to give those students those opportunities. What I have found with those students is, they just need an alternative location, alternative learning style, and I run into many of them years later, and most of them are very successful in their fields. So it's exciting to be, just having the conversation and get this thing going, and I do hope next year we can, we can start some students in that building. I hope that's what we're looking for.
So how many students and what grades?
Sure, it would be grades nine through 12. That's our license with the state for nine through 12, the collaborative, excuse me, the co-op program. We'd be looking at, in its capacity, we could house about 40 students in there at the high end, and that's just using the upstairs, which is kind of what we're looking for. There's two floors, upstairs, downstairs. If we get to a point where we need to build more capacity, we have the basement area, which does have three classrooms down there. So there's, what's great about that location is, there's not a ceiling or a cap that we have to put on the number of students that could be enrolled there. We could have theoretically 60 students in there. I don't think we'll need that, just looking at what we have. I think, you know, our capacity for a few years will be 30, once we're up and running and we have a couple of years under our bill. Okay, well, thank you for having me here this morning. I'll try and keep you on time. Dr. Deandrea did a great job of getting me on time, so I will try and return the favor. I'm here representing Wyreham High School. My name is Scott Pellino, I'm the principal. I wanted to start off with just some of the courses that we offer. I think we're very blessed to be able to offer a wide array of courses. Obviously, we're looking at some of the advanced-level courses, but as we, as we move into the next slide, we also have a lot of high-interest electives that are offered for every grade. And remember, we're grades eight through 12, so these electives are offered, some are for upperclassmen, some are for eight through 10. But the bottom line is, kids will have an opportunity to be enrolled in any of these electives during their tenure at Wyreham High School. We have a very supportive staff that about 10 years ago, all elected to teach an extra class per the new contract then, so allows us to run a couple more electives per department than in previous years. If we move on to the stats from the class of 2024, very competitive class, as you can see from the breakdown, 72% went on to post-high school academic experiences. We had 21% in the workforce, 2% in military, and 5% at the time of graduation were unsure of their option post-high school. You could take a look at some of the colleges that our recent graduates have attended. Pretty much, as you can see, we're very New England-heavy with schools, but there are some outside of New England, but some very competitive schools as well. Really proud of our seniors and the colleges they are attending now, post-graduation. And we'll go to the organizational chart. I know it's hard to see, but hopefully you have it printed out there. But basically, as you can see the principal, we have two assistant principals. We have three deans that are part-time deans, they teach, and they handle discipline for a grade level, or grade levels. We have four department heads that oversee the departments, humanities, math, a foreign language, or world language now, science, art, business, vocational, and then we have our special ed department head, they have various people underneath them. And then in the bottom of the grid, we have all the kind of essential workers for the school, our custodians, our power professionals, social workers, cafeteria workers, et cetera. So there's a lot of very important people listed in the bottom that are integral to the school functioning on a daily basis. But that's our, that's our organizational chart for our staff.
Scott, before you leave that...
Yes?
How long have you been at the high school as the principal?
Oh, man, 15 years.
I won't, I won't ask you to go back 15, but if you even go back 10, how has the, that org chart evolved over the last 10 years?
Well, at one point, we had three APs, we had four deans, we had, when I started, we had, I think, 11 department heads. We had many more teachers in every department. And in fairness, our population was about, you know, 150 to 200 more students, so take that in the context. We had less special education teachers, less power professionals, more custodians.
Full-time AD?
Full-time AD. Thank you for that one. We didn't have as many, we didn't have CNAs in the building, so it, obviously, the population has shifted quite a bit, but we also had over 60 kids out of district at the time, so like, anyone that had serious needs was sent out of district. I think the numbers now are like, what, 30? So, I mean, obviously, we've brought a lot of students back in, which is the right thing to do. I mean, a 30 to 45-minute bus ride each way is ridiculous for a kid unless it's, obviously, necessary. So that's kind of how things have shifted quite a bit. I like what we have. I think this works for us.
And I'm sure there's a good reason for it, but there seems some, like some redundancy in the sped area, meaning you've got an AP, you've got a department head, and you have a team chair. Could you articulate why you need all three of those positions?
Well, we have, a third of our population has an AP. As I mentioned, we brought back, our whole first floor is a collaborative now. So when I started in the school 32 years ago, we had three special ed classrooms. We had a young adult, we had an inclusion classroom where students would get academic support, and we had one behavioral classroom. Now, everything but five classrooms on the first floor are special ed classrooms. So things have changed. It's really our largest department, it requires the most supervision, it's also, if something goes wrong, is the most liable for a lawsuit as far as that department. You need a lot of oversight. Matter of fact, we've had arguments, and Joyce, you were there in our school council meeting, that we're actually understaffed in that department because there's so much that goes into it.
Old people are always late.
So I wish we were overstaffed or over-administered in that area. We actually need more support there.
So you have, you said a third of your students are sped students?
Correct.
How does that compare to 10 years ago?
10 years ago, we might have been 18%, maybe 20. I can certainly look up and give you an exact, but that's my, my guess.
That's my memory, too.
So I think I'm pretty close with that. It's definitely changed.
Thank you.
Can I just add to, so I love this chart, but sometimes you look at it, and it's just not as simple as it looks, right? So librarian, that term covers so much, right? It's just not someone checking out books in the library.
Right.
Which...
Thank you for bringing that up.
It's she now, right? So she...
He, no.
Oh, it is?
It is a he.
Okay.
And he does a great job, and to point to us, he oversees all the online learning that goes on, and that's such a big piece nowadays. You know, we've got VHS, we've got Edgenuity, we've got some kids taking college courses online, so there's a lot going on in the library. It's a lot different than when I started. When I started, there was a librarian, an assistant librarian, and a parent professional in there. And now it's just a one-person show, but he does a great job.
Yeah, I just wanted to point that out, because that's, when you think librarian, that's what you picture.
Right, old-school librarian, right. All right, we'll move on, thank you for that. So these are our current enrollments on the left, and you can see we're at 540 students. As you can see, if you kind of look over from eighth grade, moving on to ninth grade next year, that is a very small class that has been coming up. We've been watching them since they were in first grade, coming up, it's a very small class. We anticipate going back to a very large eighth-grade class next year. 170 is traditionally around the size of the eighth graders coming in. As you can see, we're at 120 this year, coming in to eighth grade. So we've got a little blip that's going to be on the radar for a while, but looking back at the sixth grade, fifth grade, fourth grade, they're all hovering around 170. So we anticipate that 170 will be true for the next few years, but obviously, just looking at next year, we're back to 170 eighth graders, but we anticipate 70 ninth graders being enrolled next year, and then you can move on all the way through. I'd like to highlight grade 13, sometimes people say, "What's grade 13?" Those are our students that are special needs that are enrolled until they turn 22. And as you can see, we're actually gaining in that class. I know it's only one, but these are usually very high-need students. So our total enrollment that we anticipate is 7602 for next year.
Scott, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Ninth, I cannot see the page, 10th grade to 11th grade, it's going from 109 to 124?
Right, so with some retentions, the numbers fluctuate.
Ah.
So that's why it's not, like, you can't just kind of draw lines diagonally, there's a... So that's why it's not, like, you can't just kinda draw lines diagonally. This is based on, uh, there are some retentions that will happen. Um, the eighth-grade class is actually less than a hundred and twenty, but there were some retentions that brought that to a hundred and twenty for this year.
Okay.
So it does fluctuate a little bit. Uh, bottom line is, the total enrollment should be very accurate. There may be some fluctuation, uh, again, this is projected.
Mm-hmm.
It, as far as what grade they'll actually be in, is based on end-of-year grades, do they matriculate to the next grade level. But we're confident we'll be right around six hundred for, uh, enrollment.
Uh, on that same note, going from one-twenty to seventy, how many, that loss of fifty students, what percentage of that is going to Upper Cape?
Ninety percent of that. And, and they run, if, if you wanna learn a trade, they run a great program.
No, no, I wasn't.
Right.
I wasn't.
No, we just can't.
I just, I just wanted you to understand that that's why there's such a huge drop.
Right.
So you're saying that in the eighth grade, you have one-seventy, but they come into the ninth grade, you expect to drop a hundred students?
Well, they're, they're in the high school right now.
Okay.
About one-twenty.
They're at one-twenty.
This is eighth grade high school. For me, it's nine to twelve.
I know.
So all I'm saying is, that's a large drop between people leaving the Wareham system and going elsewhere.
Happens every year, say, lose fifty every year.
No, sorry, Alan, it's one-twenty to seventy.
It says one-seventy.
Yeah, but they're in eighth grade this year. They'll be in ninth grade next year.
I understand that, but I'm saying is when they move from eighth to ninth.
When they move from eighth, they're one-twenty, and they're gonna go to seventy.
Seven's one-hundred.
That's fifty, yes. Nine-hundred.
I don't see we have one-twenty. You have up there.
The column, the column on the left, Alan, the one that says twenty-four, twenty-five.
I know, but I, what I'm doing, I'm looking at the projected, let me down. You have one-seventy.
So we're, we're, we're here this year.
I know where we are, but the concern is for the fall year.
Right.
We have a problem that not just Wareham, all municipalities have. I, you know, I spent a long time at the state level with this. We have a hard time justifying where our educational system is, and every town's the same. And it's really a shame because, uh, teachers were underpaid forever. And because, it's like the town of Wareham, we had so many, uh, summer homes here. When proposals two and a half came in, we got locked into a tax levy that was way too low, will never recover from. And the problem is, is who suffers, educational system, town employees, et cetera, because we cannot raise our tax levy more than two and a half percent. And I don't think the public understands that at all. You know, and when you go now, you have three or four communities in the ocean. Teachers are striking, the amount of money they want, uh, way, we're going to a war before they even do it. I don't know how to fix this, because the perception is, schools are inefficient, money, whatever. It's not the schools, it's the system that we're, it's broken. We should be lobbying for change on how things work completely. Because we're not gonna fix anything yet. Uh, we, we can't fix, uh, the student flight going to other places. Upper Cape does a great job. They do it for a great cost, but they also have a system where the kids are working at the school, offsetting expenses, which nobody thinks are numberable. Uh, you know, I'm, I'm, from the time I was twenty-five years old, I used to lobby always for schools and stuff. I used to always tell people, your parents never paid for your education. You know, because if you have a family, say, two kids in Wareham, uh, what is that, twenty-eight thousand dollars or so on, educational expenses? Average home is four thousand, five thousand dollars in taxes. Town's underwater. Where does it come from? So all I'm trying to get at is that, there's gotta be a way to change all this, because it's going, we're losing too much. And, and we're losing credibility every year. You know, as a selectman, you know, it wasn't on my watch, it really was. You know, because we didn't support the schools' problem. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. So we'll move on to the next slide, which, uh, I know, kinda talked about this earlier. Thirty-two percent of our students have IEPs. That number is a hundred and seventy-one. We have, uh, three ELL learners, which is a half a percentage of our population. And, uh, obviously, these students need additional services, uh, that, that are part of this budget. We'll move on, and this is just a snapshot of, uh, salaries for administration, department chairs and deans, teachers, special education teachers, guidance counselors and adjustment counselors, uh, the psychologist, which is also one psychologist, one behavioralist, and then the salaries of special education therapists, OT, PTSL. We share these with all three schools. Obviously, for the high school, it equals one point oh FTE. And then we have advisories that happen after school for various clubs, and you can see the salaries, uh, for those stipends. So that's, uh, our first slide on the budget. The next slide goes to support staff, secretaries, salaries for our tech, technology technician, paraprofessionals, and our job coach, athletic director, coaches' stipends, our custodians, our substitute teachers, food services, and so forth, and I know you hear from Mike later on about that. And then we'll move on to our expenses, uh, principal's office supplies, contracted services. Uh, this is everything from conferences, memberships, office supplies, printing. Then we go to textbooks and other instructional supplies, general classroom supplies, instructional technology supplies and software. I know I mentioned the librarian, this is where we would do the online learning, Ingenuity, VHS, guidance and psychologist supplies and other costs. This is our Naviance program, our PSATs, and various other costs, uh, for testing. Student activity, athletics, attendance, contract supplies, materials. Uh, the biggest expense here is our athletic expenses for our officials and our, uh, salaries. I'm sorry, our salaries were in the other one. Our bus drivers, excuse me, in that one. And then the last, uh, budget slide has our expenses, custodial supplies. As you can imagine, those are mostly cleaning, heating of the building. We have brand-new, um, gas, fire, uh, heating system. Uh, boilers were replaced, so, uh, that's very efficient. For building our size to, to heat at the eighty thousand dollars, everyone thinks is unbelievable, utilities.
That's good you don't turn on the heat.
That's true. It was pretty cold in my office this morning, you're right. Uh, we're, we're very efficient. We can do things that other schools can't, because we have a lot of high school kids in there. Body heat warms up the building pretty quickly. I don't think I, I could do that in an elementary school. Uh, maintaining the building, our building is now hovering thirty-five years of age. It's the oldest building in the district. There are a lot of maintenance issues that need to be addressed. We're doing a great job. Our HVAC plumbers are, are doing a great job of getting us, our HVAC head plumber, I should say, are doing a great job of really, uh, getting our building to where it needs to be. Uh, sometimes it's very difficult to find parts, because equipment that's thirty-five years old, they don't make parts for some of those pieces of equipment. So sometimes we're having to think outside the box on how to fix things. Technology, supplies and internet, and then our, our copying leases. And, uh, as you can see on the last page, uh, our, our budget is over ninety percent salaries, our expenses, and, uh, total ten point five million dollars to run the high school. Certainly entertain any questions you may have.
Me. Um, first of all, I just wanna say, for those who are, like, seeing this for the first time, when I first looked at this, all these presentations, I thought, oh, I really wanna see what it was last year. There is a slide at the end that compares the current year to the proposed year of expenses and, of the budget, so that's kinda. Um, you talked about the colleges that students go to, and that certainly is a measure of success, but there are other measures, and there are things that you're working on that, you didn't mention, I know you can't mention everything here, but I think it's really important to say.
School program, it'll be mentioned, school program.
All right. But we might not have the moves and files to be there.
True.
So just a, just a quick mention of, you know, some career-minded things that you're looking at at the high school.
Sure, so we're looking at some career pathways in the, in the science department, uh, for our students to be able to get, um, some training and some certifications, uh, to move on in science and health fields. Uh, we're also, uh, looking at, uh, potentially having some, uh, as a world language, American Sign Language brought in. We're looking at doing some EMT courses embedded into our, our school day. A lot of, a lot of hands-on opportunities we're trying to allow for our students to have as pathways, uh, for them, uh, through the high school experience.
You've kind of answered my question. This is more for the superintendent. I saw the goals that you laid out for yourself, the school. And you mentioned a couple of them. Is that already figured into this budget? Some of those goals, EM, I use EMT for example.
Is EMT in this budget? That, no, that's not, that's not. But that, that's about, what was the quote that we?
Like fourteen thousand dollars.
It's like fourteen thousand. It's, it's manageable. Um, so that's one of them. I, I think we're gonna be okay there. The other one that, that Scott did mention is putting a preschool into the high school, where we'll have some of our high school students working in the preschool as an internship. Um, and I think that's gonna be a terrific opportunity for our students. And that would pretty much be cost-neutral. The only thing that we'll, we're gonna put a bathroom in, add a, a little kid bathroom in, which costs between seven and ten thousand dollars is a quarter again. Um, so, but that, that we would just bring staff from the elementary school, you know, right over to, so there would be no additional expense around staff.
Have we ever thought about a co-op program?
Uh, we've had a co-op program. We cut, had to cut it with the budget a few years ago. We definitely have had conversations about it. Uh, it was a great program for, I've written a lot of our business department. And, um, unfortunately, it, it took a lot of, it was a double period. So when we looked at it from, uh, because it was done at the end of the school day, so the students could go on to a co-op program after their lunch period, which was back then was period five, then they go off for period six and seven. Unfortunately, when we had to make decisions for the budget, uh, there were roughly twenty students involved in the program, and it tied up a third of a teacher. So we had to make a business decision in regards to, do we offer enough English classes for kids to graduate, or do we run this program? And obviously, you know, how that worked out.
It's, uh, I'm not sure where Northeastern is anymore. They used to have a piece there with a fellow who ran a bunch of things at Northeastern, offered programs for cities and towns as a grant program with low costs. I'll look into it when I get back.
Yeah, and I know somebody graduated from Northeastern, so, uh, this, but Matt did too, so.
Me too. I actually had a, a cousin that was the, uh, professor in the county. And when I went to, the first time I went to Northeastern freshman year, I walked in, it said, "Malch, from the slave, a little book for coming." And of course, when they read my name, all her friends said, "Well, he's also..."
I'd definitely be interested to find out, you know, which area was that.
I forget the gentleman's name. Uh, he actually, uh, did something, uh, full-on in town, actually, for some program we had. They brought in a whole bunch of students and everything else. I just think the co-op program of working in the real world, it really opens up most kids' eyes to what's really like.
Definitely, definitely. And they're, they're known for their co-op, obviously, Northeastern's one of the best ones in the country.
Of course, it's two hundred and seventy-five dollars a year.
Um, just one more thing. So, um, you mentioned a meeting at the high school that I was at, um, a couple of weeks ago. And, of course, we look at this budget and the supply lines are relatively so small compared to all the other lines in the budget, right? But I just wanna say that there are, um, a lot of people I know at the high school, and I'm sure at all the other schools, that work hard to make sure when they're making purchases, that they're getting the cheapest price they can, just like we all do at home, right? We're gonna, we're gonna buy a TV, we're gonna shop, we're gonna get the cheapest price. And Alan knows where I'm going. Um, so, you know, they did some work and, and they bought from Amazon, and they've gotten pushback. Nothing but pushback from the town. And, you know, this is coming not from Scott, but from support people at the high school who were doing the work over there. And so I guess the message that I, I interpreted, but they're just not gonna try to buy from Amazon anymore. And it's disappointing, because you buy the same thing for twice the price at somewhere else, but because they can't, because the town is gonna push back on Amazon.
Um, no, but the reason, the, the reason to, but the reason to that comes with that.
I thought so, so I was wondering.
If I sign my name to a, a warrant, the pay, I'm responsible for the other day.
Me too.
Uh, but even more than you, and, and Tyler Cotton also. So the problem is, is there was no control when it first came in, not just on the school side, but other departments as well. So all I did was ask for simply supplies and paperwork, explain what it is. Wasn't concerned about the price. I wanted to know what they were buying, because there was no control. Uh, I don't care where you buy stuff, if it's less expensive. The problem Wareham has, and I've given up twelve, fifteen years, I've asked for a central purchasing agent for the whole town, because that's the most efficient way to do it. You don't have to have one to the school side. You don't have them offering maintenance, maintenance, whatever. You know, it, it saves money. It's been proven everywhere in industry. When you have, like, a human resources person, you have a central purchasing agent. They pay for their salary in less than a year, and that's where we all should be going.
Well, I mean, they have a, a system of purchase orders and approvals on purchases.
But it's not central, that's, that's the problem.
But they're gonna buy the same items. They're just gonna buy them somewhere else for more money.
Yeah, why do that?
So, why do that? Because they get pushed back when they're trying to buy from Amazon.
They all got pushed back because there was no control. After I, before I left, it was already, everything was going smoothly. I don't know.
Well, I guess it's not going smoothly now.
When I was using Amazon, again.
So it just, I just wanna make the point.
I spent more time in clerical work, trying to procure pricing to show that we got the lowest price, and we did, and Amazon's moving.
That's, that's not, that's not what my, my issue was. My issue was, there was no control, these people.
I think it's post your issue, though, in all due respect. I don't think it's anything to do with you anymore.
Of course not. Not there.
No, but I'm sorry, it's a whole different situation now.
But the way I understand it, to keep it simple, so we have a list of twenty things that we're gonna buy, and we can get the cheaper at Amazon. We're being told, no, don't buy them at Amazon, but go to WB Mason and buy the same things.
Pay twenty.
Pay twice as long.
Can I ask you to tell me that?
I'm sorry?
Can I ask you?
I don't know. That's just, I, that's just, I don't know exactly. So, but they've gotten so much pushback.
I will, uh.
From the town. So it, it, I just wanna point out that we could be saving money, but we're not because of that, so.
And the amount of time my secretary had to work on showing that Amazon was cheaper was more time, if I look at what she gets per hour, than I saved on the, those three purchases. So I have told everyone, we're not purchasing from Amazon until further notice, because I can't spend fifteen hours for three purchase orders to say, Amazon's cheaper. It's just not, it's not mistly sound.
Unfortunately, we're in the wrong direction, direction strictly there. Some control that people just could call, you know, whatever they want, whatever they, that was the only reason.
Yeah, I don't think it's the same, Alan, in all due respect. I think it's changed since you left.
I'll be stopping the accounting office when I be here.
All right. Well, I really took a lot of time on that. I just wanted to make that.
No, it's okay.
Talk about saving money, so.
Hey, but I think responsibility runs out.
Just to add, when the town brings its software rep into the century, and Kristen knows, I've been crying about this, that I came to Wareham to get the unit system or another system in, it just.
It will change.
Solve some, some of these things.
John Foster.
John Foster's retired.
It's one, it's one central accounting system. In all.
Yep.
It's, it's got many platforms, right? I'm not really sure how I wanna describe this, but I would, I worked for it now as a department head, so I could, I had, I wanted to buy something. I had to get a purchase order, went in and got approved by the central purchasing person, you know, and it went from there. It was, it, it was easy accounting. I mean, Kristen came from a program, same program, correct?
Correct.
Did you like it?
Yes.
Yeah, it, it was great, 'cause I could, as a, as a department head, I could look at my budget eight times, yeah, I only had this much money left and this much money left. And, you know, it just, it, it just simplified everything. But there was pushback when it first came in, no mistake about it.
Change is tough.
No, I'm like.
Change is tough, and I agree, you know. But, and I'm gonna tell you, honestly, the biggest, biggest pushback was on the, on the school side. You know, it was interesting, but everybody came around, everybody loves it now.
See, the town has used the radar system fee as a town treasure. It's very confident, like, if John Foster retires, which is coming, uh, we will be moving to a new system.
I mean, just the licensing fee for that program, and I know that another town, Walden, Little, the licensing fee was a hundred and ten thousand dollars in this budget. But it's used for attendance, it's used, it's used for a lot of things.
Sounds like our school information system is used for so many different things.
I, I don't wanna dwell on this, but I think Alan makes a good point, and I think Joyce also makes a good, good point. But Jeff Bezos is a billionaire because it's so easy, okay? I personally will routinely go to Amazon, I will go to Walmart, I will go to a couple of other places just to get the best price, because Jeff Bezos has never said he's the cheapest. So we need to keep that in mind. If we had a central purchasing process that didn't make this guy and everybody else involved in the purchasing process go through hoops, you know, just to make that happen, which I know is not Alan's goal, okay? Then it probably would make sense, because Amazon is not the solution to every purchase. But we can't have the unintended consequences of administrative people all over the school district or all over the town doing crazy things just to try and get a, a small thing purchased. So it's this middle ground that we're struggling with right now, and we need to eliminate it, because in this particular case, he certainly has better things to do.
Well, we'd like to be able to use Walmart too, that'd be great, while we're on the subject.
Yeah.
That's a whole nother story.
It's fifty bucks for a case of tennis balls at, at Amazon, it's thirty-two at Walmart, just as a simple example.
We can't use Walmart either, so that would be.
Why can't you use Walmart just like you're asking?
I believe it's for the. I believe it's for the same reason as, as Amazon.
All right. Okay, we all should be pushing, pushing for a central person to give us that award.
I agree.
You would solve, you would have no administrative work whatsoever.
Love it.
Bingo.
All right.
Thank you very much. Appreciate everyone's time. And I'm on time, too. I'm early. That's unusual.
Saw you at the parade yesterday, way back.
Oh, yeah, I saw you. That was an awesome parade, wasn't it?
Yeah, you worked really hard for that.
That was, I mean, I think it's one of the veteran's day parades.
We had, you know, Bob White pass away recently. Bob ran that parade for years.
Yes, he did.
He stopped because of so much work and.
Yeah.
He came down with lung disease like his brother and, yeah, I made him a promise before he passed, that we would get this back running. That was over a year ago.
Yeah, it was, last year was great, too.
Lung disease.
Great, great. Thank you, everyone. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Thank you. Tracy.
Thank you so much. I'm ready.
All right. How you doing? Yeah, I guess you could see it.
Are you on there? Right here?
Hi, Tracy.
Hi.
So this is Tracy Cote. She is our principal of the middle school. So welcome, Tracy.
Thank you. All right. We're at middle school. We're grades five through seven. This is our organizational chart. This has been updated. We had significant cuts at the middle school last year. We had four Unit A members cut, one assistant school cut, one secretary cut. So you will see that they are missing from this organizational chart. Next page is our enrollment. It stays pretty steady. We've actually had a huge influx in the last three weeks of students moving into the district, coming back from Rising Tide and moving into the new complex over by Seven-Eleven. So we also had some other families that vacated spots at, like, Union Pond. And then now people are, now moving into those spots. So I have about ten or eleven new students in the last three weeks.
What grade are they coming, sorry?
Um, the odd, odd phenomena is every year, one grade gets the influx of new students. And it's been sixth grade this year.
Even from Rising Tide?
Fifth and sixth. The Rising Tide students come, well, I have Rising Tide students coming back in both five and six, so, yeah.
Does there a common denominator as to why they're returning?
From Rising Tide?
Yes.
I, we typically have a lot of fifth graders that return. It's just not what the parents expected. The parents didn't like it, the students didn't like it, so, yeah.
And then they, do they, they could go back for high school theoretically?
Theoretically. I don't know that they do, though.
Okay. But this pattern of coming back from Rising Tide has been going on now for years.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Interesting.
Yeah, definitely.
And what is this Seven-Eleven?
Oh, that, what is that one? Is it called Cove? Dr. Dandria?
Woodland Cove? Is that what it's called? Yeah, that new apartment complex next to Seven-Eleven.
Oh, which way they live?
Yes.
Guys.
Yeah, sorry.
But is it fully open or is it opening in stages?
I think half, I think half, a little bit is open. Is it all open now?
I, I'm, I'm sure they moved in. I was aware that they're moving people in. I didn't know if there was a restriction to that up there.
There's a lot, well, I took my, it was weekend and it has a lot of cars and a lot of lights on, but I don't think it's fully open.
I was just wondering if you're gonna continue to get students.
Yeah, I assume.
I think we are.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think, I went there in August, talked to the property manager. She said, "Half the buildings were opening late August, and then they were scheduling the second half to open, I think, after the new year."
All right, so those are my projections for next year. And I just took realistic numbers, if you don't know. Special education numbers this year were at twenty-seven percent. I only have two ELL students, so that's really not a percentage.
Tracy, why do you think the number of IEPs increases when they go to the high school? Because Scott said.
I have no idea. It doesn't make sense to me. Because typically you test kids less in the older grade. So I, we test, do a lot of initial testing in fifth grade. And I get that because they get real grades now. But typically, we hardly ever test anyone in seventh grade, so I don't know why.
Because Scott's over, what's he at, thirty-some, thirty percent?
Um, I wonder how much here thirteen, 'cause all the thirteens are on IEPs, so. Do you know what I mean?
Yes, no, 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 good point. I forgot about thirteens.
'Cause every single one of the thirteens is on an IEP. So you keep them and they don't, you know.
And then the students leaving.
And they stay awhile.
Students leaving might be a higher percentage of students that are non.
Non, so it goes off that percentage, yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense, too.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so the percentage for twenty-five, twenty-six, I mean, it's the same, about twenty-seven percent. We are getting four ELL students from West next year, so that brings it up a little bit more. Costs, you'll see here, some staffing costs. And we haven't added any new staff, so that's just with raises that have transpired. This is our custodial secretary, parent professional. Costs. We do have after-school activities and this, I'm sorry, I talk too fast. Is accounting for that and for our substitute salaries. And then, we have broken it down into, you know, combined some things just to show you a general idea of where the funds are going at the middle school. Our final expenses, can't really, we do the best that we can with the building and utilities. I think we have a beautiful building. The roof is all new, and so we don't expect any floods this year. But if you walk through the building, we really invested, the town has invested into keeping this building beautiful. So I think it will be up and functional for many, many years. And then the last page shows you our total at Wareham Middle School. It is lower than it was the year before due to all of our cuts. And it's still lower even with, you know, all of the unit increases and raises and stuff, so. Ready for any questions you might have? Yes.
Through your budget, student, is there anything that's, anything you look at that's outstanding or in the sense of, of new this year? That, where did that come from?
Oh, costs from this year?
Yeah.
Uh, nothing that I can really think of. We're replacing all of the lights. We're making a good dent in that in the last two or three years. Not the lights, but we're trying to get them to be LEDs and you have to bypass the ballast. So we're doing that. Our unit vents are really, they've been doing great. We do need to replace the fire panel. And some, all of the fire, I don't know what they call them, but anyhow, the whole thing.
It's all the devices.
Yeah, the devices for all of the fire panels. And that, we don't have a choice. They're outdated, so we will be asking the town for that. But that's really the only thing.
Piece of equipment.
Uh, one piece of equipment I did ask for in this budget. Sixteen thousand dollars for a John Deere. Ours is about to die. But Eric, our facilities person, was looking into something else, so. That was the only major thing asked for.
Did we at the capital planning meeting do the fire?
We, yes, we, we talked about it. We talked about the high school project that's ongoing, almost done. And then we also said, "We're going to have to be doing the same thing at the middle school." So we, we introduced it.
I think it's on our five-year plan.
Yes, yes.
Just so everybody understands, the capital planning committee is going to, the town, spring town meeting is not changing a dollar value, it's less considered capital. It's so far outdated, it's foolish. So for John Deere, you were doing, you were putting in your own budget. Because sixteen thousand dollars is way in the.
Yeah, yeah, I put it in this budget that you're seeing now.
A lot of time you put it in the capital, town is afraid of it. You put it in, it won't be his budget anymore.
Yeah.
So the useful life of something is irrelevant.
Always has been, unfortunately.
It's part of why it's so difficult to move from GAAP to municipal accounting.
Well, if we're gonna change what the government's capital means, hopefully make it easy to pass this town meeting this year.
So Tracy, I don't know if you skipped to the, to the, to the final page, but I have, because I got this quite a number of days ago.
Yes.
Level service is about two-point-one million dollar problem.
Yes.
Even, even significantly less than that is an eight-hundred-thousand-dollar problem. As the superintendent should do, when he's got a problem, he doesn't, he doesn't dictate how to solve it. He asks the principals.
Correct.
Where would you, if you go back to the org chart or you go back to your list of expenses, where would you look?
I'm really screwed, so I would look at my teachers. I have nowhere else to cut. I, I've cut secretaries, I've cut custodians, I've cut administrative, like, there's nothing else to cut for Wareham Middle School. And we're all feeling that right now, so I would cut teachers. I, I really, and my staff knows. Like, I, we did the best we could do. We cut a counselor this year. We're suffering with that. With those eleven new students that came in, seven of them were on IEPs and six of them called for counseling. So I, cutting the counselor now, my other counselors are like running rabbits. So I, I have nowhere else to cut.
So the, I'm not surprised.
Yeah.
And the implications for that are what in terms of what you offer and class sizes?
So class sizes will increase. We're already offering barely nothing for Unified Arts, because I'm down to probably four full-time Unified Arts teachers. So a lot of kids get PE twice or art twice, because we just don't have the variety that we have. We cut health, so not everyone at the middle school gets health. Uh, we would cut classroom teachers, so class sizes would increase.
And what are they now?
Um, so they're, it, oh, I didn't leave that to you. They're about twenty-twenty-one. Reasonable, very reasonable. But they will go to the side of being very unreasonable.
Could you elaborate on that? 'Cause I know, I know other cities and towns are doing much worse than twenty-twenty-one. So you're right, those are really reasonable. If you lost, I'll pick a number, three teachers. What would that, what would the implications be for class sizes?
And so at the middle school, it's a little bit different when you lose a, lose a teacher, right? So we had two social studies teachers retiring. One of our cuts last year was the social studies teacher. We didn't replace that teacher that left, which makes sense. But at the middle school, it's not like the elementary school where you just, you don't replace the teacher. I need so many sections of social studies, so many sections of ELA, so many sections of that. So right now, I have a three-person team in seventh grade and sixth grade, and the teachers teach more than one subject.
Really?
Yes.
That wasn't true when I was in middle school.
Right. So they, so we have like a math teacher that teaches one class of social studies. We have an ELA teacher that teaches one class of social studies, 'cause we didn't replace that social studies teacher. In fifth grade, it's the same type of scenario. They work in two-person teams and they're elementary certified, so I have eight of them, two, two, two. But if I have to cut, now I'm gonna have a three-person team in fifth grade. Doesn't work as well. We've done it before and it's just not, you know, conducive. Wareham's a little bit different. Our, our special education population is very high. A low socioeconomic, um, population is very high. So when you start adding more and more kids, you get more behavior problems. You have less time on learning. You need more counselors, you need more administrators. So, I mean, there was a point in time at the middle school where there was a daily fight. Police were called in. That's not happening right now, but I can't say that's not gonna happen if we're all running very thin. Do we need that? Yes, we need it. This is the population we have right now, so.
Can I just, so, what you just said, so you asked a question, or you pointed out earlier that, you know, we lose kids in grand public schools, they go other places. And that's one of the reasons.
Yes.
That, you know, nobody really wants to talk about, but if my kid comes home from school and says, "Oh my God, there was a fight in cafeteria again today," well, I might look to send it somewhere else. Even though Wareham Middle School does a great job, just those types of things. And that's what's happening and that's hard.
Great job.
So that, that's a factor.
Most parents will admit that they have prejudices and they, they just don't want their kids mixing with other kids anymore. And there's nothing we can do about that.
That, and that is, that is the truth. This is the population of kids we have. This is us, you know? So, but that is, that is the truth.
So the, the more adults in the building, the more, the more.
Yeah, I mean, it's, yes. I don't know how other, um, I've, I've been here for thirty years, so I'm not quite sure how other middle schools function, but it's not quiet here.
And yet, Tracy, I don't think you give yourself enough credit, because the educational environment in the middle school has improved, I'll use the word dramatically, and I don't think that's hyperbole, since you took over. And you must, it's gotta be more than just adults in the, in the building. What, what do you think is the one or two things that you have done that have proven to be so successful?
Um, I think it's, I, number one, I think it's culture. So it's culture within the adults, but it's also culture with, with the children. And they know the expectations and they know that we're going to support them. So I'm down in administrators. So I feel as though, like, "Oh my God, we're not supporting them as much as we were supporting." So, but all of that plays into, my staff will do just about anything for me, most of them. And the students know the expectations and they know that there's gonna be consequences. And the consequences are consistent. And, and they know not to mislead, because they don't want to. We also do a lot with building relationships with families. Again, it takes administrators and counselors to do that, trying to build those relationships.
So you have two APs and three department chairs?
Well, correct, but don't forget, my.
No, 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 that wasn't my question.
Oh, yeah. My one AP is a team chair. That's her primary job.
For Sped?
Yes, she's, she's a team chair. I don't have a team chair. So Ms. Prade is an AP, but her primary job is a team chair, and that was very deliberate. We have a large population of substantially separate students in this building, as do we do in the district. And that was part of the problem of it being out of control. I, I needed someone to control that. So Catherine does that for me. But she's also the team chair, because I was losing her. So I eliminated the team chair when Dr. Dandria came on board. So I don't know how many years ago that was, but in order to keep, and I, I really think the team chair should be an administrator.
Thank you.
Yeah. And I have no department chair in special education. And my department chairs teach three periods, which isn't so in the other schools.
I thought they were supposed to teach two, not three. Yours do three?
Mine do three, yeah. And I, I think the high school does one, and I'm not sure if the elementary school does any. So they, the majority of the day, they're teaching.
I assume you wanna stay with the teaming model, because it allows, it's like a school within a school allows kids to build better relationships with teachers with those.
Yes.
Small group of students.
We really.
That they all share.
Yes. Um, I, every time we have the budget, so I haven't done it yet, 'cause it's still early in the budget, but I will do a survey to my staff. And I said to them, "Do you wanna keep the teaching?" So, we lose things, we gain things, but we really do wanna keep the teaching model because it, you get a smaller group of kids, you get to know those kids. And I also can separate kids who don't get along. Um, so it works for us, but if I have to cut more, it doesn't make any sense, um, in sixth and seventh grade because we already have a three-person team and a four-person team and it just... But we've held on to it as long as we can. Cause we did have a point where we had huge cuts and we had to get rid of teaming, so.
Can I just say, you pointed out the culture in the school and you've created that, so, but I just wanna point that out.
I, I mean, I feel like we all have created it, but I've let it, I've tried to lead it.
Yes, yes.
Sorry.
Just one quick thing.
But thank you for that.
Uh, Michael Bubin, who I think is a professor at the UMass Docent. Uh, Mike's done a lot of work in economics and, uh, what they say the town is and what the structure is financially. And he's proven over the years with his studies that as you increase the educational standards of the town, it increases also the dollar value of people living there and crime, everything just, everything goes the right way. It might be worthwhile sometime with the school to consider bringing him in to teach a class once in a while of what he does. Uh, whether it's the high school or the middle school. Uh, it can't hurt, especially the UMass usually has programs available for that. But he's the only one that I've seen over the last ten years that is not afraid to call and say, "Well, really, is that..."
And the value of education within a community, right?
Yeah, he proves the value of education. The value of the attainment of education value in a municipality, everything just really rashes up to say, that's why we need a good line of wealth and all these things.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
The value of talent, all managers.
We're passing.
But if, but if you ask, uh, the Department of Revenue who controls chapter seventy, that's exactly what's happening in Wareham.
Yeah.
Our property values are going up.
Yeah.
And our incomes are going up, which is why we're only getting thirty-three percent on chapter seventy. And when I moved here, it was more like forty-five.
Unfortunately, the property values are about sink and dents and everybody else's income level, as we all know. Wareham has become a place to come by property.
I understand that, but Desi's numbers are hurting chapter seventy for us.
You know me, I'm a fan of Desi.
Actually, it's probably D O R, not Desi, anyway. No, it's both. Okay, whatever. Tracy doesn't need to hear that.
Nope. Thank you, Tracy.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Tracy.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to the elementary school and is Dr. Chandler, how about that?
Look at that.
It's almost like somebody's contacting you.
I am. Good morning, everyone.
Hey!
Good morning.
Hi, everybody.
Good morning. Okay, do, do we wanna take a break? I see people are, we're good, we're gonna keep going?
Yeah, I apologize, I gotta leave at eleven-thirty, so the fact that we're ahead of schedule works for me.
We have a plane right after Bethany's.
Okay. So, Dr. Chandler, the principal at our elementary school, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for being here today and listening to this presentation on our preliminary, preliminary budget. Um, this is the organizational chart, it stands, um, this year. We'll talk a little bit about the cuts that were made last year and how those numbers have changed from last year to this year as we go through the presentation, specifically in administration, guidance, and office staff. Here's the projected enrollment. Currently, we have about nine hundred fourteen, fifteen, we have students who come and go, it's a large building, but about nine hundred fifteen students currently at the Wareham Elementary School. Our numbers from K through four really range from about a hundred sixty to one hundred eighty, and that's pretty consistent each year. Um, I can pretty much budget, I know now for kindergarten, that we are typically going to get about anywhere from one sixty-two to one eighty, it's been the last few years. We had one year of a big bubble. Um, but you can see my numbers are very consistent throughout each of the grades. Um, the only difference is preschool, that does fluctuate because it is a special education preschool. Therefore, the number of special education students that are referred, evaluated, and brought into our school also has to level with the number of peers. So, that number grows throughout the school year. So, right now, we're in November, it's seventy-five. When we, um, if we met together in spring, the number would be higher probably. We will be about at ninety then. Questions about enrollment?
Free K, what's the hours per day then?
Um, we run full-day sessions, um, it depends. For three-year-olds, typically, they go part-time. For four-year-olds, we have, we like to get them kindergarten-ready, so they go full-time. It's Monday through Thursday, full days, and then half-days on Fridays. But some parents do elect to have their preschoolers just come for half-days. So, we do run AM and PM sessions. So, some students are there for the AM, some students are there for the PM, some students are there full days.
Now, the, the, the peers pay?
The peers pay.
Pay. Um, and it's a, it's a rate set by school committee?
School committee, yes.
Um, do you have any trouble collecting that money?
No, we're very diligent about collecting that, those fundings.
And are there any discounts associated with that?
No, it's, it's, it's full pay.
And are you full?
Yes. We're full to the matching time right now, but we are full with what we have for staff.
Okay. Do you compete with anybody for those kids around, around the community?
I, I feel like we have a population-
Are we the first choice?
Yes.
Okay.
We are the first choice.
So, that answers my question. Thank you.
Uh, currently, this year for our special education population, we do have a high number of special education students, um, at thirty percent. That does include preschool, so please bear in mind that. And, um, I do have a high population of special ed in grade four, uh, this year. So, um, some of those students, you're gonna see my numbers, uh, will change next year because that high population is going to the middle school. I also have the largest number of ELL students, and that's why I have two, um, ELL teachers. Well, I have one very full-time and then Mr. Marcus does travel between the other schools. But our population of ELL compared to the other schools is very high, as you saw in the last, probably the last presentation.
Why do you think that is, I saw that?
Um, I think that, I, I don't really know, Joyce, I, I just, I think that, um, the younger, I think younger generations are coming in that, um, are from different nationalities and they, uh, and they are, that population will move up. That's my only speculation I have. Um, our ELLs have all, numbers have always been quite low, but now because of the elementary, we're starting to see, um, higher numbers. So, that is something to pay attention to.
How old are the kids in Free K and K, and how do you tell that they, they got issues at that young age?
If they what? Oh, if they-
I, I know, how do you know they had, they had issues at that young age?
Oh, so, our students are evaluated, um, based on standardized tests that we use from the special education department. Uh, we also have screening tests that are available for preschool, we screen them. And in kindergarten, we screen all students. And that, those are indicators to, um, the special education teachers and the speech pathologists, the physical therapists, occupational therapists, whether or not those students do indeed have a disability. Um, if they have found to have a disability, they do go on IEPs. At, we love for some of, and sometimes it happens in our preschool, they will age out, they will test out of an IEP based specifically, especially in speech. So, that's how we do it, we do it through screening tools.
And is that, is that a yearly test?
Is it a what?
Is it yearly tested?
Yes, yearly. Kindergarten screening happens, uh, we do that, we, after we have our kindergarten registration, which is happening the second week of March, then we go into June where we do our kindergarten screening. So, that's when we evaluate every student that's coming in to enroll into kindergarten. And the same thing happens at preschool. When they come to register, we put them all through a preschool reg, uh, screening.
So, you can differentiate between what may appear to be a learning disability, but in fact is an ELL issue?
Yes, we, that's interesting that you say that because, um, that is still a difficult-
It sounds like a difficult issue.
It's a difficult issue. And, and we have had students that, um, have met the criteria of special education, but indeed, it's really a language barrier.
So, so how do you do that? Never mind.
We, it's, right, it takes time and practice. I think both for the ELL teacher and the special education teacher to differentiate whether they really have a true learning disability or if it's just a language barrier.
I'm sympathetic to that process, it must be very different.
There's a lot of communication that happens in between, um, in between those different departments to understand that.
Yeah. Thank you.
And you can see here in twenty-five, twenty-six, um, the special education population we are projecting will go down just a smidge. As I said, the grade four population has a high number of special educa, special education students that will be going into the middle school. Currently, this is, um, what's budgeted for, for administration. I think it's important to note when you look at this screen of, um, the cuts that were made at the elementary school level last year. Uh, we were requested to cut four hundred thousand dollars, that included administration. I've lost two assistant principals, so I run that building of nine hundred, um, as you see, nine hundred fourteen students with one principal and two assistant principals. I do have a department chair that runs all of the curriculum work, um, and all of our assessment needs. And I do have a preschool department chair who runs the preschool. And as I said, that's a special ed, um, it's ve, it's, it's very, very involved. So, I do have, um, two other administrators there. But it is, it is, it is combat a cost to our school building.
I asked Tracy the same question, and I think I'll get the same answer. You've cut and you've articulated the kinds of positions you've cut. We once again have a budget problem. Is it fair to say that the only place left to cut, um, are teachers?
Uh, that's really, I'd have to go with teachers. It would, I've lost, I've cut a, an administrative assistant, I've cut two APs, I've cut, um, a social worker, which I really, it was really difficult to make that cut. I've tried, tried to do all of the other areas within the school building, not affecting classrooms. But if we do have cuts, I do now have to go to the classrooms. I do have twenty, twenty-one students in a classroom now at an elementary school level.
So, so the implications for class sizes, if you had to cut, say, three teachers, would be?
Twenty-four, twenty-five students in class.
Thank you. Just one question, uh, at nine hundred students, are we close to capacity now?
Um, we can, we can go up to ten-twenty, so we can go up to ten-twenty. Um, I've got, ooh, about two or three open classrooms in that building where I could, I could host it. Um, but I would need teachers for that, those rooms too.
Thank you.
So, you can see even here with salaries of psychologists and social workers, I have two. Um, so we've, that's been quite a cut to our, um, our school building. The related services, if you're wondering, those are OT, PT, um, speech pathologists at our building.
What kind of student, I mean, you obviously don't have high school clubs. What kind of student advisors do you have? What kind of activities is there?
So, um, we do have student council, we have band and chorus, and we have intramurals running.
Got it, thank you.
We can go through expenses now. And if there are any questions on any of these line items, I'm happy to share, to speak to that. I know our utilities bill is high, but we run a very, very big building. So, if you picture two school buildings in one, um, that's where our utilities, it can get, is really heavy. Other questions?
I just looked at my own bill and it's just, six years ago, I was paying twenty-two cents per kilowatt hour and now I'm paying thirty-six.
Wow.
All together rates of thirty percent.
Great.
Don't work the bump in anymore.
I don't. You know, our electricity is efficient. I mean, the lights turn off when you're not in the room, it's wonderful. I've gotten so used to it now that I just expect lights to come on when I'm in a, in a room. Even the restroom, so you just expect everything just to turn on and they don't.
When are you getting solar panels on your roof?
Well, the school is prepared for that.
I know. We made sure it was built for that.
We, we sure did. So, I mean, that's a discussion, I think, um, with the town and, and to look in if, if-
I never saw it.
We should continue to-
Is the resource gonna allow it?
I think the biggest problem for Wareham is, uh, way back, uh, there was a solar project in, uh, and I signed the town to, which we basically, uh, you know, get any credit against it, it was thirty-dollar a, a bill. And unfortunately, the town, now that that, uh, didn't give the proper information, that's where it went. And, uh, we thought we were way under, uh, what was allowed, it turned up right at the max. So, we've had to start, uh, doing projects in the town, which will affect our usage, which is really a lot.
It'd be so much nicer to put them on top of the building as compared to cutting down trees to create a solar.
Not, not I, but it's just that-
Yeah, I know.
It would, if you would have to lease, you would have to lease the, the projects, not home.
I understand.
It can be done, but I'm just saying it's, that's what really happened.
Our roof would be ideal. I've been on top of that roof, um, a few times and it's great, it's nice and flat, it's high, so-
It's new.
It's new, it would receive a lot of sunlight there.
Those seagulls.
Other questions?
Thank you, Dr. Taylor.
Well, I think, I thank you for your time today, I appreciate it. And, uh, we're hoping for an excellent budget season. Thank you, you're very welcome.
Okay, a quick five-minute break and continue ahead of schedule. Ms. Fumey and Jane will be here.
Yeah, I just wrote to her. I didn't take a five-minute break, but I should have given this to you. Help yourself to something if you're hungry, okay?
I'll apologize, some of the words I left behind, I had a little idea.
Some honesty.
We have to, we all have to take responsibility, I tell you. There are doubts, I gotta take responsibility.
Your actions, alright.
It's just sitting in front of us, it's not fair.
So, in the last one percent, I have a few, a few of the solar, you know, companies in my house, we have a partner, so we have resources, we have a lot of solar panels. If, no. What have they been doing, is it, is it, at the smoke of the new company? State law has to choose a certain amount of program, which is really, they don't take the patents.
Yes.
But there, there's still other expenses you have to deal with. And they show you how much you use for a month and how much the family saves.
So, she'll, she'll, when we, when we make them-
I must, a lot of, she's got a chance, twenty-four cents on life insurance. Well, the whole thing, when we came to the house, there was a problem, I've got my letter, I had to deal with-
Alright, well, we'll see.
So, I would have to pay, I have twenty years to recover. I told her, oh, that's twenty years left to live, so I can't do it. But I would love to, because-
I know. And then we don't have another meeting after this till next, next series?
My son's house, I, but the solar, that's, uh, you know, what they are, it's, you can use this much, fourteen kilowatts.
Yeah.
Like, what the salt burns, it's a great deal of water. Then they have to go to the other source, they see, they go here, so.
They have to go back to the river.
Yeah, yeah. So, they get through that, so we come, but it looks like a transformer, this great big thing that come, we all-
The school committee sets the graduation procedures.
Solar panels, now with the grid.
You have a north end of the grid.
We set solar panels, same, like, if the only thing that the state requires- They say they take up to six months before they, yeah.
But you gotta say, you wanna get some jet increase.
Cause we, you know, solar costs, they say, is so much better than their own system. That's why they got it, they can do it. There's a way to, you know, provide that, most of the first five years, it's very costly, it's twenty-five percent, say, it's expensive.
Just, 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 yeah.
Why don't you tell us?
I was surprised, so I think that's three percent, was when he asked him, like, Chrissy's husband, he said, wait, no, about fifty. So. Oh, yes, he asked, he asked the service, he asked, they get them. And Chrissy's asking for quite that respect. I, we just, with the gas, at the end of the day, yeah.
How can you afford this concern? I think if you have war makers, you run the risk of.
So.
You don't have that.
And usually, certain terms also have the check, you take a special. Well, you know, all these. And with the kids, they can buy.
That's the old test.
We just want to move on to you. So that was, that was. They have to rush them there. We don't like sending them to the. Nowadays, how. What the state is, you can, well, except the laws, but take it into the whole problem, everything else, we're taking. Now, it's great, it's, it's, have the questions that every. Any questions? So you're okay, it ends up that way. And. In fact, the. They sign up, and we'll see where it goes from there. I, I had a revelation, but.
I don't know if they're gonna give it again. You would have to take it with the tenth grade. But what they would do is they would take out the hard questions. Because the hard questions were only to identify those kids who were advanced.
You're getting a lot of birthday messages.
If you were, you were, you were exceeded, you exceeded the standard. So now they're thinking those questions out, to that pool of those kids. Now, now they're just looking, can you meet the bare minimum to graduate? So they take out. So, so that was something we would have to figure out.
Yeah, and that's.
So we might say you're gonna take the tenth grade again.
Somebody can see your things.
It's nice.
I don't want to be in better data.
I just.
Um, so he has no reason to ask to.
I started with shots.
So he applied to like a. So locally, white words.
Right, then they don't, they, they get a.
I don't want to get into this, okay? We don't really get into this. So we need to actually, yes, whether they're potential. So it's, because I want them.
Yep, and then.
Chris, they're at, because the schools, right?
May that show.
They're not gonna text you.
We wanted to, we wanted to, we could be with you, so.
Based on targets.
It's exciting.
Oh, it's, it's scholarships.
And then I did the CSJ online.
So we have, we might say, we're gonna do TLA.
So you still have to go through.
But maybe more.
I don't want that. I know, I'm sitting there, but we actually, because I have one, um, company adding.
Right, right.
So I'd be just adding my child.
Yeah, yeah.
And then all my, you know, all of our babies, it's the same amount of guessing. I heard that you just click and you say, yes, everything, and then it filters into Will.
Oh.
And connects my kids together. I know, I'm, I haven't done it yet.
But where?
It is. Yeah, it seems like it's. Fun smiles, pictures, soccer.
So that's, I was looking at that, so like, if it did, it would be great. We could see this, so the town aware, we have the same, or the town where, if the town. Yeah, that's what I was just saying, where, where have we, approved of that? Six, it was like six. Around there, it was around there.
It's still exciting.
Yeah.
I think it was a slam dunk. Went to Boise, yeah.
Who were then, who is now.
Yeah, exactly.
Good, good. How's that be gonna? Oh, wow.
Learning anything?
I, I went to upper grade for high school, but I was in the middle school, so it's interesting to hear about how things have changed since I've left.
Did you enjoy upper grade?
Yeah, it was good, I was.
And yet you're here.
I know.
Oh, that, so if you did have a kick, you didn't have to.
You didn't have the chance to go to Bridgewater State while you were in Wareham High School?
Yeah, right. That is the one thing that, I think, they obviously, they had the advantage for, but I know the kids that ended up doing, like, the eighth grade in the high school here, if they went to upper grade, it was so weird when their classes trying to, they were gonna do things to beat up a little bit. So it made more sense to stay on track, to stay where.
I have a big problem with, I love the upper grade as a place to get a good education for a specific school, for specific trade. My problem is, I think a lot of kids who like to go to upper grade are denied the opportunity to go to.
I do agree with that. They're very rigorous, so.
And they didn't used to be, before your time.
Well, that was, that was the argument when I said, hey, I'd like to go to upper grade, my dad went. My mom was like, I did trade school.
And that all changed.
Right. So it's interesting how everything was in this one.
Yeah.
And I'm concerned.
Now, past the state, not enough room for all the kids who want to go to a box tech store.
I'm just gonna let the excitement, yeah, I'm not gonna say it, but then I'll, I'll remind you. It's really hard to be, you know.
Use it a lot, fish ever is. As I understand, do you like it there especially? That, do a game, I'm told, people get paid to change, like, people wouldn't work for the time, like, people. You know, I work for the cap, they say, you don't get any money for that money. Things are, or with taxes, and stuff, you know, I mean, they knew the money was there, it's like, they thought, it's just a bank, a company. You don't want to wait.
Correct.
We got bills too.
Right, you can last. All right, let me go tell you, um.
Well, if it's not, you know, I don't care.
Okay.
Soon, because it's a better problem to help, but I'm not sure, I really don't know. We don't see that side, you're, that's, so I never seen.
I'm eating an apple to offset my munching. That's right. Suddenly, isn't so bad.
It just doesn't work. People are just not, you know, it's nothing yet.
Don't read on my part.
I wasn't in that.
Hi, Jane.
Good morning.
Do you want to wait just a moment? Jody is coming, he's coming back?
Yes.
Okay, we can wait a minute for Jody to start.
Yeah, I do. Yeah, I will jump to you. She's, there are snapshots of people, but she had a photographer, so she's waiting for those.
Yeah, I know, we usually ask that, people to, like, take pictures that time.
Yeah. Yeah, and it's nice to just, correct the picture, walk away.
Not wearing a knight, I love not wearing a knight.
In gaining, night name. Yes. But what, what, well, when she was dragged by the court, how many were quite good? Um, so the way she took the ribbon, it's quite important, but then.
They got it.
And so I'm here.
And there's no team, my office, and I just.
Yeah.
Jordan, are you all set?
Okay.
Jordan's all set, Matt, so we can start when you're ready.
Rest. Rest. Yes.
Okay, so we'll move on now to our beyond school time. And our director is Jane Fundulus, so welcome, Jane.
Thank you. Okay, so the first slide, so we break it down a little bit, because the office beyond school time is a big umbrella for many, many programs. So we have the program called CARE, which is K to seven, and SAIL, which is eight to twelve, it's an after-school and summer program. So this year, we have right from summer 2024 to the fall to next spring, about seven hundred and fifty-five students, which that will pretty much stay the same for the twenty-five, twenty-six school, school year. Unless there's more grants that come out and we get more money, then we can bring in more students. The COOP currently is ninth through twelfth grade. We have, you can see the students that are enrolled, we have thirty-seven students. And right now, we have nine school choice students. The good news is that we are increasing our school choice, particularly next semester as well, because Plymouth and Carver have contacted us, because Middleborough will no longer take them for night school. So we'll see an influx of Plymouth and Carver students. So I just wanted to give you an overview of what is in the office right now, beyond school time for the 2024, 2025 school year. And typically, most of these grants, they're competitive, but, you know, we've been lucky. This should be consistent with FY26, but we have over a million dollars in grants right now.
Jane, if, if the Department of, Federal Department of Education was eliminated, would that have any impact on your grants?
It would have effect on the twenty-first century, they're the only federal, most of the others are state.
Thank you.
Yep. But twenty-first, it's not going anywhere. Um, so the COOP.
You say that because it would require legislation to make it go away?
I think so, but it's also, it's been there for twenty-plus, twenty-five years.
Don't get too, don't get too comfortable, I'm not saying it's gonna disappear.
No, I know.
Don't get too comfortable.
Well, one of them, I'm guaranteed five years, so.
Okay.
Because, yeah, so, we'll throw aside fingers. Um, the COOP, which is no cost to LEA, currently, this is what we have for our staffing. We have a principal, which is me, between the teachers and the onsite coordinator. We have one guidance, and he works wonderful with our students. We have a retired state security who's been with us for years. And I have one secretary, there are no paraprofessionals. Um, this is pay-through school choice, my cap grant, in-kind contributions. We have partnerships with First Group Investors and with the Nibedford Workforce, Mass Hire. So they come in, do a lot of program at no charge. So we've also been able to increase some electives that our students have not had the chance to participate in. So we are now Monday through Thursday night, instead of Monday through Wednesday night. And then, this is just to give you an idea of the staffing and the cost between a school year program, CARE, SAIL, um, how many staff, we have four coordinators. Typically, there's twenty-two teachers, most of them work all four days in the after-school program, Monday through Thursday. We have one nurse, typically, we have five buses that we have to transport the students home, and two secretaries, and sixteen paraprofessionals slash interns, because we do have the high school internship program, which is wonderful. In the summer, we have twelve interns during the school year, anywhere from two to three. And they are treated and trained as a student-teacher in hopes that they will go in further their education in the field of education. And then in the summer program, typically, this is what we look like. We have seven coordinators, because we have many summer programs going on, forty-three teachers. We have two nurses, one is stationed at the elementary and one at the high school. Typically, we have six buses going, because we not only have to bring them to school in the morning, take them home at two-thirty, but we also have off-site field experiences that the students participated.
So those, those numbers, six on the previous slide, five, they don't represent people?
What number?
You said buses.
It means five buses, so it's five staff. But that price of forty-two thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars, that's what cost me to transport students home.
That's what you're, that's what you're paying for rate?
The director of transportation.
Yes, okay.
Yes, yeah. And then the same for the summer one. Uh, last summer was a little bit cheaper, it was twenty thousand, nine hundred and fourteen, because unfortunately, I had to go from a six-week program to a five-week because of the cost of transportation. And it's just, you know, just less COVID money, so we had to cut back. Hopefully, my goal is next summer to get back to the six-week and not the five-week. Because the grants that I have in the office right now, that's just money that's going till June thirtieth. Then we get grants that come out for summer programming that we can apply for competitively. So typically, there's about three or four grants that will come out in the summertime. And that's BSC.
Where's Boost?
Where's who?
Boost.
Boost would be in the summer programming.
You don't, you, but it's a subset of.
Yeah, it's, it's included in the summer. So when I had, say, last summer, I had forty-three teachers. Those forty-three teachers were CARE, SAIL, the accelerated academy that we do in the morning. The kids do an accelerated academy, and then they go into the CARE or SAIL program in the afternoon. And then it's also the Boost, which is a full-time, eight-thirty to two-thirty, just like CARE. But it's all my programming, so all of these funds, all of the grants we have, Title I, which supports the Boost. So that is.
But the last time we talked, you didn't have capacity for all the kids who needed Boost. Is that a?
No, I think we, I think we changed that, that we, we had the capacity, we have the capacity, we, this past summer, we were able to take every single student. Both Boost.
Maybe, maybe the superintendent can help me. When I asked Dr. Chandler, and I thought we were talking, I thought, thought you were there as well. There are three options, three? I guess, yeah, three. Three options for a kid who's not doing well in elementary school. They can be retained, generally, the very young kids, because there's a stigma and all sorts of other issues associated retention, with retention. Then there's Boost, and then there's being pushed to the next grade, even though they're not ready for it.
No. There's the Boost, but Boost is, well, all the programs are voluntary, nothing is mandatory. There's no mandatory, but the Boost students, they are invited to do, to choose Boost instead of CARE, because they need a more concentrated English or math focus. The parents can either put them into the Boost or put them into CARE.
Yes, but if we, as a school system, said, we can't have two-thirds of our kids leaving third grade not, not reading and comprehending so well, okay, which is what the state is telling us, and we didn't make it voluntary, we said, you can be retained or you can go to Boost. My question is, do we have the capacity to take all those kids that chose Boost? Because I suspect many parents would say, free summer school, I'll take Boost.
Well, they take CARE, it's free too, it's all free.
Right.
So, and CARE, because CARE is academic too, so a, a family can choose to have them just do the CARE program and not the, and not the Boost. But we had four teachers last summer for Boost, and all students, families that wanted their student to go into Boost, went into Boost.
Yeah, but you're.
We didn't turn anybody away.
You're, you're at the academic end, there's an administrative end, and the superintendent knows what I'm talking about. And that is Bethany giving the parents a choice, not a voluntary, if you'd like, but giving a choice. And my question for the superintendent is, if those were the two choices, and they had to pick one of the two, does Jane have the capacity to take all that we might be sending her?
So you said two-thirds.
That's what the state is telling us.
Right, because two-thirds did not meet.
Standards.
Meet the standards.
So.
So that's over a hundred kids, right? Two-thirds, I mean, it's about a hundred and eighty kids.
You're talking about third grade?
Right.
Yes.
So, so you're talking about a hundred and twenty kids if you're.
Yes, it's a lot of kids.
It's a lot of kids, so.
By the way, just. By the way, just so everybody knows, we're not unique in this problem, okay? The state has, has, has this problem. Okay, but go ahead.
So, I-
Are you, is he just targeting, are you just targeting the third grade because the Boost in the summer is-
Yes, I am. The numbers that the-
But the Boost in the summer is K1, 2, 3. They do four grades.
I understand that, and by the way, that would reduce the numbers in theory when you got to third grade, if you were giving this choice, K1, 2, 3, instead of just three. So, that's a very good point.
So, next summer, you could just focus on the grade three, have four classes with grade three and not do your K1, 2. And then, you'd get 120, because typically, with Boost, with four classrooms going, we're right around the 80, 90 mark with students.
I just want to make sure we have the budget, since this is a budget meeting. I want to make sure we have the budget to do what is necessary in order to make sure the kids don't get to middle school not comprehending what they're reading, or reading well enough to learn.
Well, I have the grants, and that's what pays for it, if there's any other money available to boost up the numbers.
I would love not to take any LEA money to do this, but that's a different issue. Are we on the same page?
So, I think so. So, if, if we're talking 120 kids per grade-
Well, let's hope it wouldn't be, but-
Well, if you say the third grade, and you say two-thirds did not meet the standards on the MCAS.
Correct.
So, and fourth grade is in the same range, yes?
I don't know.
Other grades in the same range? I mean, we, we know where we fall, and it's typically in that area. But you're right, this is a statewide issue. This isn't unique to, to just where here.
Our responsibility is to solve it from where.
Correct. So, you would be talking about approximately 120 students if we were, if we were to carry that number down the grades and say, you know, we, we have to hit, you know, 60, over 60% of the students. We, we couldn't fund that. We, I mean, no, we don't have that money. You know, we're, we're looking at those kids that are, are really struggling. I mean, a lot of those two-thirds of the kids that didn't meet the standards, many of them are close to meeting the standards, and we continue to work with them during the school day to try to get them over that hump, so they're in that one-third. So, we may not, we may not say to them, either you go to summer school or you stay back.
If I was talking about a first grader who was close to meeting that standard, then you could say, okay, when you get to second grade, you'll meet the standard, okay? But we're talking about, they've gone through kindergarten, first, second, and third, and they're still not meeting standards, and there's two-thirds of them. I can't think of a better place to put resources than making sure that they get to middle school capable of learning.
So, yes, I mean, if we were to focus specifically on third grade, what Jane said, well, then, yeah, we, we could do that, but we would not be hitting those K1, 2, that like, hey, this, this student really needs the help and-
Don't get me wrong. I like to do it after every single grade, and you know that, because we've had this conversation. I just want to make sure we have the resources to do it.
So, no, we don't. We don't, we don't have, if you, if you want to, you know, get two-thirds of third graders and say, you've got to go to the summer program, and still provide services to K1, 2 of our kids that we know really need this extra help, we don't have those.
Well, let's hope if we provide the resources to K1, 2, that we don't have 120 kids by the time they get to third grade. That's a much better system than wait till they, they're failing in third grade before we worry about. So, it still comes down to, I want to know how much money it takes, it would take, to solve a problem that the rest of Massachusetts doesn't seem to care about for a variety of reasons. I want to solve that problem so that, so that when they get to middle school, they can thrive instead of struggle.
I agree with that, but you, I don't know if the silver bullet is six weeks in summer school either. I think it's a combination of interventions, and we've talked about this before, you know, I know you know, but interventions and this.
And plus, most of the students are in the after-school program, the 32 weeks after school. Many of our students do every session in the summer, so they're getting a lot of support during the after-school program as well.
I'm not saying don't do interventions.
No, I know.
You know, it's a-
But we need money for interventions.
Yes, exactly. It's multifaceted, but if we're going to, if it's, if a budget is the expression of the values and the priorities, okay, is there a better place to put it than where kids are starting to learn, rather than having them get to middle school when they're starting the process of, I don't like education anymore. As soon as I can drop out, I'm going to, because it's not working for me. And I can, I understand that frustration. If they can't learn and they're sitting there for six hours, it must be the most frustrating thing in the world. So, I would really love for this budget process, for at least us to be able to tell the town, okay, if we had this much money, we could solve, or go a long way towards solving this problem instead of having fourth grade be filled with two-thirds of kids who don't belong there. Enough. I said my speech, I ranted enough. Thank you.
Yeah, just quickly, can you explain, if you would, I don't want to take a long time, CARE, SALE, and I think this is the first time I've heard Boost.
Okay, so the CARE, we just gave them names, but they're, they're programs that are academically focused with an enrichment piece, so it's all hands-on, project-based learning. So, CARE, we call CARE for K to seven, kindergarten grade seven. So, it's community, academic, recreational enrichment. And then, when we got the high school grant, we, the students came up with the name SALE, so it's just called SALE. Boost was given the name Boost because it is a program that the elementary school, most of the teachers have been trained in, and it's a, it's a scripted curriculum to boost students up in their reading and math.
Thank you.
Yep.
Couple slides back, you showed a list of grants.
Mm-hmm.
Could you just tell me the funding source, through, like, federal or state?
Sure. So, the 21st Century Community Learning Center grants that we have at the high school, middle school, and elementary, those are federal. But they come through the Department of Education, so they come down from the federal. The ASOST is an after-school and out-of-school time, and that is a state-funded grant. The MYCAP is something that you're going to, is a push for, it's a state one, and the MYCAP is to create a platform, and we have it for the middle school and for the night school program. It's sort of eventually going to be part of the replacement of the MCAS. It's all about setting goals in the students' platform with their assessments and college career readiness and that. The CPPI is a grant for our elementary preschool to, and that's a state one as well. And that's working with our local preschools outside of Wareham Elementary School in providing curriculum and OT and PT that students that come to us from those schools entering kindergarten will be on a level playing field. And then, the Playful Learning, same thing, that's a state grant, and that's a particular curriculum. The Intern's Grant, Intern's Grant is state, CFCE is state, that's a grant that is for birth to age seven, and then Title I. We have a piece of Title I that has to come to our office, because Title I, you have to have family engagement and you have to have academics support.
Have these all competitive grants, though?
Um, yes.
They all are?
Yes.
So, they're guaranteed year in, year out?
No, but I've been doing this for 20 years, and it can be nail-biting, but I haven't, haven't lost yet, but I don't want to voodoo myself.
Title I is federal, though?
Yes.
Yes, so the combination of 21st Century and Title I is about 40%, close to 40% of your budget.
Right, and the elementary one that we just got for the $210,000, we used to have mine at Indevious, and because they no longer exist in the Department of Education, they made, I had to go competitive and apply for Wareham Elementary School. And we were awarded that in this, in June, and that's the one that is guaranteed five years before it rolls off again. The high, middle school and high school are rolling off this coming spring. It's the way they do it, you roll up, goes competitive, you have to write a novel, and then, if you're awarded, you're good for three years to you roll, so it's always rolling.
Guaranteed by what? Guaranteed by what? Because almost every state grant has a, the language in almost every state law is comma, subject to appropriation.
Yep.
Okay, so as soon as you have that subject to appropriation, the guarantee disappears.
I agree with that, but I'm just telling you, I've been doing it for 20 years, and I haven't seen it go away.
I admire your tenacity and your success. Some things are beyond your control.
All of us.
Yes.
Almost mine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jane.
All right, so, we're going to move into a few additional parts of the budget here versus curriculum, instruction, assessment, professional development.
Is it Melissa's turn or district's?
What's, what's next, what's the next slide?
Melissa's.
Oh, it's all in there. All right, well, if that slide, is the slide there?
Yes.
I didn't know who that was.
No, no. Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
All right, so, Melissa and Kathy. Okay, so, we're going to go into our student services, and Melissa Fay and Kathy Bollier are here. Welcome.
So, these are all of the student service lines in front of you. They're pretty straightforward. If you have any questions about any of them, what, for example, like what comes out of them, please feel free to ask that question. So, we've got the salaries of our office, medical therapeutic, and extended school year program, so that's the program that we run in the summer that we're required to run by the Department of Education for students who have IEPs who show significant regression during the school year. So, we have to have that program running in the summer for those students that we've identified. Contract services for home instruction, so those are our students who might be homebound or need services in their home, tutoring or other related services. Contract services, technology, that amount covers our ESPED, which is our information management system that handles all of our IEPs. Contract service, medical therapeutic, that would be all of our people who service our students who are not employees of the district. So, for example, our physical therapist, who is part-time, is a contract service provider. She's not an employee of the district. We contract her in two days a week to cover our needs, among other things in that line. Our copier lease, supplies, materials, and then travel and other is when our teachers or service providers go through outside trainings that are specific to their practice, and we cover the cost of those trainings as well as any mileage associated with that. Anybody have any questions on this?
The people who are on the buses when the kids are being transported are not in this budget, correct?
The monitors are not, no.
No, not just monitors. The nurses, for example.
The nurses.
There could be as many as three people-
Yes.
On a bus.
Yeah.
Right?
So, currently, we have two, three, three students with nurses on a bus. One of those nurses is actually paid for through K-Pod Collaborative, where that student attends school, and then they bill us back for the nurse, but that nurse is an employee of theirs, not an employee of ours.
Okay. So, is that in the, this budget?
That is not, that's, that's a-
It's in the nurse, it's in the, it's in the district.
That was in district, yeah.
Exactly, but that does not include, this does not include that. Right, okay.
So, district health would be the nurses, and like I said, there are three. One that we sort of, we pay for, but in, out of tuition through K-Pod Collaborative. The other two are contract nurses that we have on buses for our students.
So, the medical therapeutic, that's what I'm getting at. That's a big number. What is that covering?
A lot. So, that covers physical therapy, so our physical therapist-
In the schools?
Yeah, she's in the schools, but she doesn't work for our school system. She works for several school systems. She works for us about one and a half days to two days a week.
Okay.
That was to save us money, so we run our services through a physical therapy assistant, and the physical therapist oversees and supervises her and does the evaluations, because a physical therapy assistant cannot evaluate, but they can provide the services to our students. So, this was a more cost-effective way with our current caseload of students who receive PT, to be able to deliver services with fidelity and still be able to cover everything. So, that's where that comes from. We also have some students that are homebound that have occupational therapy services that go into the home, speech and language services that go into the home, and also board-certified peer analysts that go into the home. And those are not our people, because our people are working in our buildings, so we contract out with different agencies. An example would be PACES, which is Pilgrim Area Collaborative Educational Services, which come into schools and homes, provide services for students on the autism spectrum. Got it?
Got it, thanks.
Anything else there? And this is our district-wide, this is our out-of-district students and our students in districts. So, currently, we have 526 students that have active IEPs. This does not count students that are in queue for eligibility, so students that are being tested right now, who we haven't had meetings on yet, or students coming through early intervention, so those are our littles coming into our preschool that are in the process of being evaluated. Those numbers don't count on here. These are only active IEPs of students that have already been found eligible for services. Out-of-district, we have 16 students that are in collaborative out-of-district schools and 21 in private, and those numbers are very big. And we do have, how many, I'm blanking, you talk about?
We have currently a total of 37, 38 right now, out-of-district students. We have one residential school student.
Is that the fully responsible for?
That's fully responsible.
There's a lot of caveats to the residential schools, because many of them are cost shares with either DCF or other school districts, so many of them, we don't pay the whole tuition, we only pay half.
Can you give us an example of, that tuition's $200,000?
It depends on the tuition, so like, I can give you an example of one that we actually just got back from an out, from a residential to a day school. That was $278,000. We were able to step that student down to a day school, which is about half-ish the price, but they can range anywhere from, I saw one the other day that the price went up to $378,000 a year, so they're, they're getting pretty expensive. And it depends on level of service. We find that the student, the schools that are for students with social-emotional disabilities tend to be on the less expensive side than a school for students who might have very intensive needs for like ASD, autism, or medical needs that we aren't able to manage in a typical school system. Those tend to be a little bit more costly.
The residential ones, are there any, is there any assistance out there?
So, Circuit Breaker is our assistance. And we bring, I mean, this is my eighth year, we bring anywhere between, since I've been here, 1.1 to, 1.875, this is, yeah, 1.75 million in a year. The state sets a foundation of what we can claim above, so it usually will range anywhere between 40 and, what was it?
50, 54.
50, 54, recently, 50 to 54,000. So, the cost of a student needs to reach that cap, and then anything above that cost, we can put in for extraordinary relief through Circuit Breaker. Kathy does that work, very intensive, meticulous work with the Department of Ed.
Way bad.
Yeah, and then, they, they audit us and stuff too as well, so that, that happens, is what happened this year, to make sure that we're doing everything the right way. So, things like nurses on the buses, excessive tuitions, related services in and above what a program is offering, we can claim with the state, and the state will reimburse us back at a rate that will range anywhere from 60 to 75-ish percent. So, we do, there is that relief available. With some of the tuitions that we have out, we are cost-share, so if an agency is involved with a child, like the Department of Developmental Services, Department of Mental Health doesn't do it anymore they used to, but they no longer will fund placements, and the Department of Children and Families. If they're involved with a student and that student needs that level of residential care, they will cost-share that with us and take half that cost. Or if a student has parents that live in different districts, and one parent resides in Wareham, we would cost-share a placement with the other district.
So, is that, is that 3.688 then, pre, pre-Circuit Breaker?
Yes.
Yes.
And what would be reasonable expectation of how much of that would be paid by the circuit breaker?
Typically, for the past few years, we've been using one million. This past year, in this current year's budget, we are using one point one million, and then we have some other costs that we use Circuit Breaker for as well, for tuition. We've been going around a million to one point one million.
And the reimbursement from the state, it changes.
It's, yes.
When they determine year to year what that may be.
Right, the max, I believe, is up to seventy-five percent, and it's hovered between seventy and seventy-five percent the past few years. And then they, I think they determine it sometime over the summertime, I think it is. We get our final, you know, they'll let us know in, in September, what our Circuit Breaker reimbursement will be. And that'll be for what Kathy has put in, usually around June, July, for the previous school year, so. And then they also reimburse for transportation. This year, they reimbursed about forty-four percent for trans, eligible transportation costs for students that meet, they have to meet the foundation, which, as Melissa said, is around fifty thousand. But for a lot of these, a lot of these placements, that is not a difficult thing to do because that's very, very, very low. So, so a combination of their tuition, maybe any services, you can also play for in-district students if they have services that get them up to that fifty thousand and above, and then also transportation.
So just to be clear, if a student, if the cost is a hundred thousand and the student is the fifty, so you put in for fifty thousand, but you're only getting seventy-five percent of that fifty thousand?
Correct.
Is that okay?
Yes.
Right, okay, I thought so, I just wanted to say there, okay. So it's definitely misleading.
Well.
Well, I guess if you set your expectations lower and, yeah, okay.
So is transportation included in those numbers?
No, no, not, not transportation, no, no.
I didn't think so, so to piggyback off of what Joe said, the average cost for those sixteen is eighty thousand. So, and let's use round number fifty thousand for foundation. So twenty-five percent of the thirty thousand difference between the eighty and the fifty, okay, is seventy-five hundred. So that means those sixteen kids are costing us fifty-seven thousand, five hundred round numbers per child compared to, even with Circuit Breaker, okay? Compared to less than twenty, significantly less than twenty for the child who isn't being transported out, and that doesn't include transportation, which is very expensive. So this is, this is, don't, don't think of Circuit Breaker as a great gift because you gotta spend fifty to get any more, you know what I mean?
Just one more question. K-Cod Collaborative, they moved all of their schools this year, right? Has that had an effect on how many students you send there?
It has, I don't know if it's the distance, it's in South Yarmouth. There also is a new team there as well, a new director, a new program manager. We have, I believe, four or five kids there now, we typically have more than that.
And many parents are not happy with the distance that their child has to travel to get to the new location, and I think that's a deterrent for parents.
Plus the cost mark for transportation.
Yeah, and if you've got, if your child is ill and you need to go pick them up.
Right.
And it's also, it's also, some of the kiddos have a hard time running that far for that length of time.
I don't blame them.
Are there other, and I, I'm sure that Wareham has been part of K-Cod Collaborative forever, right? Are there other collaboratives that we would become a member of instead? Or does that not happen?
So there are a few collaboratives in the area, the majority of our kids go to K-Cod Collaborative. We have a few kids at Pilgrim Area Collaborative, we have a few kids at Reed's Collaborative, and we have one student at South Shore Educational Collaborative.
So the benefits of becoming part of a collaborative as a member of a district is a discount in tuition and ability to prepay for slots. Unfortunately, in the current climate, those slots are not always a guaranteed slot for a child if they don't have the proper staffing to staff for that child. So even though we may, in the past, have prepaid for slots, if we had a slot to place a child in, if we needed one, we're often not able to send the child there because the staffing wasn't up to where it needed to be to be able to support another student, so that's also been problematic. I think the only place, and we haven't even started discussions about that yet, that I might consider is Reed's Collaborative, and only because it would give us a discount on evaluations when we have parents that request independent evaluations, it would provide us with a discount there. But the slots, I hesitate to prepay for slots that we might not be able to use.
Just, just to be clear, you prepaid, they don't have a slot, they send you back money?
Oh, no.
So?
Oh, no.
So, you're kidding me, really? They just keep the money and don't give you the slot?
Correct.
How on earth is that legal?
There's a lot of variables that go into placing a student, one of which is parent consent. So if, you know, there is an opening and the parent decides that they would like their child to go to Pilgrim instead of Wake Point, that's one variable. Another variable is the level of services a student needs to be supported, and that entails having an appropriate peer group, an open spot in a grade level, et cetera. There are a lot of things that come into play.
I believe you.
Yeah.
You know, I absolutely believe you. I just want to understand, how often do you prepaid and get nothing of value for it?
It's only happened to us since COVID, but we stopped, but we stopped purchasing, we stopped prepaid for slots. Now we prepaid for the slots of the children that are already there. Because the savings isn't even, yeah.
Good to hear, thank you, okay.
Oh, I'm gonna make a little sound. Okay, English Language Learners, which also falls underneath my department, I might have to get up.
Here you go.
Okay. Okay, so we're considered a low incident district because of our numbers. So currently, we have thirty students, we just had one additional one register last week, so this is based on our last October reporting, so we have currently thirty-one students that receive VL services in our district. We have two staff members, one that serves as a coordinator and provides direct services at the middle school and high school, where we have low numbers, but also assists at the elementary school, and the other is a full-time staff at the elementary school, where we have the largest population of our students, pretty much, or I would say at least three-quarters of that number are at the elementary school level. They have a very small budget, so it's pretty much just the cost of staffing and then a small supply budget.
What makes up the majority of the languages? I know it's probably a mix, but does it sound better?
Spanish, Portuguese, Haitian, Creole, Russian, and Islamic, no, no, not Islamic, Arabic, same as the tribe, Islamic, Arabic. The families are Islamic. So those are our five top languages, but we have sprinklings of other things as well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Matt, are you gonna record on curriculum before I have Eric come in? Because I skipped it on you, I'm sorry.
No, it's all right, let's just keep going.
Do it at the end, when you do transportation?
Hi.
Alright, so we're gonna move on to facilities. And Eric Trayton is here with our facilities director, welcome Eric.
Thank you, thank you, hi everyone. So I first want to stop by saying thank you for the town and all departments for your support for the two MSBA projects that we had done here, so just kind of wanna briefly go over what the scope of work was for that, if you guys already know about it. So with your support, we completed two MSBA projects, one being the roof replacement here at the middle school, and the second being the boiler replacement project at the high school. So diving into the roof, a big project into five bullets. We ripped and replaced a hundred and sixty square feet of insulation and installed a thicker PVC membrane roof. I think the concern was seagulls dropping shells on the old roof, right, ripped right through them. There was more to it than just that. So like I said, a hundred and sixty thousand square feet of insulation with a PVC membrane, ripped and replaced all the brick and mortar work that had flashing on the backside, that's all replaced as well. Replaced and tested forty roof drains throughout the entire school as well. Corrected any pre-existing electrical issues that we have in the rooftop units. And we also, in the project, we replaced a kitchen mega bear unit because the old one was barely functioning, and we were afraid that if we did lift it with a crane, we probably wouldn't get it back down to one piece, so it was an add-on alternate for, for minimal money compared to the overall project. So with that, the total for that was three point four million. I know we, everyone gasped when we had the estimate of eight million, so we're very underneath that one. The boiler project, well, do you want to stop there, did anyone have any questions about the roof? All went well, everything's working fine, so. The boiler project over at the high school, we replaced six Kelly Patterson boilers with five new Lockitbar boilers. We replaced three hot water tanks for the ones that are existing over there. The pumps are now variable frequency drives, so more efficient as far as what the building calls for in what we supply compared to kind of an off and on switch, if you will, which is what we had in the past. We corrected a lot of pre-existing conditions with the plumbing. The building did not have any mixing valves in it, so the water temp was the same throughout the building, which is kind of a hazard, if you will, for hand washing sinks. But the kitchen had its own anyways, but that's, I'm just talking about the rest of the building besides the kitchen. So that's all squared away. We have a localized building management system just for the boiler room that myself, our HVAC tech, can see from our computer just to make sure the boilers are running fine without actually having to go there present, physically, to overlook and see if everything's running the way that it should be. As far as cost savings, I know that's probably gonna be a question coming up. Last year was a lot of troubleshooting, so it's not really a good gauge to see comparative pricing as far as what we're using for gas and electricity. I think this year will be the best, but, I mean, it's been seventy degrees almost every day, so who knows if that's even gonna be a good, a good gauge for this winter as well. But all in all, that project was just shy of one point seven million. Both these projects had a reimbursement rate of seventy-four percent, I believe, or just shy of that, so that's good for the town. Moving on to future projects, so these are our current and near-future projects. So over here at our middle school, we learned that the fire suppression system, the entire system needs to be replaced. And the reason for that is that their current system is obsolete, and we cannot find replacements for any of their devices. So, for instance, manual pole stations, smoke detectors, if they go, we have no replacements for them, and that means that that area that they arm or is now unarmed, and the fire department will have a big problem with that, so they're unsupported, if you will. So same thing that we just did at the high school, we'll need to replace the fire panel. The school has around two hundred and fifty devices, smoke detectors, duct smoke detectors, heat detectors, main and pole stations, all need to be replaced, but we're gonna keep the wiring here, because the wiring is still good, which I can't say for the high school as well. That in total is one hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, that's just one quote that I've got. Just want to see if we have the funding, and then obviously it needs to go out to a public bid. Hopefully, it comes in lower than that, but that's the issue that we face here at the middle school. Any questions on that?
You've got an expense slide, right?
What's that?
Do you have an expense slide that follows this? I haven't.
Correct, yeah, yeah, I know, I kind of jumped.
I'll save my question, go ahead.
The first two slides, I, sorry, just wanna dive right into my notes and disregard that slide.
Actually, can I just ask you one question?
Yeah, go ahead.
The fire suppression, so at the high school, that was original to the building, right? So that was what, over thirty years old? The middle school, so was that not done when it was renovated? I know you weren't here then, but.
I don't know, it seems that it is an older system, but I don't, that renovation was done in two thousand and two. I don't think it's older than that, I would believe, so I would think that they did do renovations with that. Probably not. I would have to look to see what the old fire panel was because that is the newest addition in our fire panels and that, so I don't know if they just moved it or if they actually did.
Okay, no, I was just curious.
No, I'll note that, because that's good to know. Alright, so that's what we face over at the high school here. I know I just said one fourteen, but the slide's actually a one eleven typo. So the high school, just like the two MSBA projects, we want to enter another one, another accelerated repair program for the doors and windows of over at the high school. Just reached out to the MSBA just to make sure that we hit all the thresholds before even trying to submit a statement of interest. So one of the thresholds is age, so I want to be sure that we are in the range that the doors are old enough, the windows are old enough to even apply. The current issues that we have is all the exterior doors are rotting from the inside, so not closing properly. And again, if we could enter a program like this, it saves the town a lot of money compared to having to fully fund it ourselves. So I know that most of the windows don't function, they don't function as well as they should. Half of them don't even open, which is a big concern when there's no AC in that school at all either. But before even doing that, we would need to speak with the school committee and the select board approval before we can submit the SOI, but just something on the near future that we intend to do. Currently, we have a rooftop replacement over at the high school as well. This is funded by the I-VAC grant, but it's just good to note that that's kind of what's going on. So the I-VAC grant is improving ventilation and air quality, I think that's what it stands for. This area gives heating and cooling to our cafeteria over at the high school. And right now, we're currently under review for the structural support. There's kind of a lot of back and forth about that, but once we get past that phase, the swap-out should just take a day or two, and that project should be behind us. But that's the current update with that. So now, jumping back to the high school's fire suppression system, yes, we did just have what we're looking for for middle school to do, the fire alarm panels, replace all of its, all of its devices. But while we're replacing it, we found multiple groundfall errors throughout the whole system, which is due to corroded wiring. So now we need to, the fire department gave us the okay for this year because it is functioning. Although it is showing those faults, the entire system's up and running, the building is armed. But we really need to pull all the existing wires out and replace them with new. They are corroded, and these are what's showing all the faults in the system. I don't have a price on that, I'm waiting for the awarded vendor to give me a price to see what that's going to cost. It costs eighty-four thousand to replace everything, so I can't speak for how much this will cost for cabling and hauling everything, so. If you have any questions on that, I'll be happy to answer too. There's two more items on my, so. After speaking with the superintendent and the building principal, I think we want to introduce a new front entrance renovation to the high school. If you guys ever been to our middle school and elementary school, our main entrances, our vestibules, are considered man-trap areas. So you can walk in from the exterior doors into a vestibule, speak with someone at the front office, but still not be allowed into the rest of the school. This is for the sole purpose of keeping the public. This is for the sole purpose of keeping the public and students separate and make sure the students are safe. We currently do not have a setup like that at the high school, so that's something that we really want to pursue, uh just for the security of that school. We have reached out to Mount Vernon Group just to give us a proposal, um and we've looked at multiple locations at the high school to introduce this. Uh nothing's set in stone yet, and I'm also reaching out to another company to just compare prices on the uh feasibility and schematic design phase of this project.
Have you moved?
Yeah.
Because they were just suggested that relatively recently at the junior high school.
Correct.
Nothing, no, no, maybe.
No, we've, we've talked about it, um Carl, our resource officer, has brought that up to us as well. I think they paid a hundred fifty thousand, but I think they used what they had existing. I think they had the room to do that, to maybe just install another set of doors. I do not know if we have that same layout over at the high school. But go ahead, does anyone have a question?
I was gonna say, so just to, Mount Vernon Group was the architect for the elementary school.
That's correct.
For those that might not have figured that out yet.
Yeah.
And is this something, I mean, I think it's a priority, um.
Yeah.
And is it's, so we're, we're talking about our budget, but this is a billion, I don't know, that would be in the budget, right? This is something that we would pursue with the town.
Correct, I feel like most items on here would be something that probably wouldn't be able to follow.
Well, on yours, yes, yes.
Correct, yeah, everything else you guys are talking about, yes, but as far as the facilities side, no, they seem just like uh capital pro- or something that would require the town to uh to fund.
Right, so I guess I just thought it was important, while we have some members in mind, it's pretty interesting to say, you know, that is definitely I consider a priority, I don't know if just the.
Yes, well, I'm just surprised in this day and age that hasn't been done.
Right, so, yeah.
When you look at the high school, it looks like the, the, the side entrance that they use as their main entrance, looks like it's, like I said, it, the side entrance. It looks like the school, and I think it's because of the wetland, uh it looks like the school should be flipped ninety, uh spun ninety degrees for where the foyer is.
Right.
That seems like it's the front of the building.
Mm-hmm.
But even then, talking with uh Mount Vernon Group, the way of egress actually goes large to small. It it gets shorter as you get to the door, so that's, we don't know what the functionality was for that, because ways of egress usually is the opposite. Usually a small space to a bigger space to get you outside, so. Like I said, we're looking at multiple areas um to introduce this, obviously the the most cost-effective way um that still has all the functionality that we're looking for is the way that we will approach this, so. Um then I don't know if we should speak on the last one, the McDuffie Annex, I don't know if you guys talked about that already.
Only, only that we're looking to utilize the building.
Correct, yeah, so with with that, I I think the idea is to renovate, to create functioning classrooms and admin areas um for school programs that we have here in districts. I just threw a ballpark number of a hundred fifty thousand, um again, I think we would ask the town if this would be something on the, the, the budget. I I don't know, I don't wanna speak for anyone else, but um what that building needs as far as the facility side, I would uh replace the roof, because I do see water marks inside, so. And I know there's no pipes above, so we have a, a failing roof. Um all the external exterior doors should be replaced. All the forms of egress on the other side of those doors should be replaced just for uh safety hazards. And the rest is just interior cosmetics, replace ceiling tiles, back lawn paint. And that's pretty much it, there's not much, the building's actually in pretty good shape con- con- uh considering. But that's all I have for the facility side, because if I miss anything, please.
I think you got it all.
Let me know, I know I like to talk extremely fast and hopefully you guys have got everything.
The uh last item, have you submitted that to the Capitol Planning Committee?
No, not yet, I think we spoke, or did we, we mentioned it?
Which one, the last item?
The McDuffie Annex.
No, we, we have not.
Could you take care of that for me?
I'm sorry?
Could you take care of that for me?
Sure. We, we, we also need to submit the, the front entrance.
Yeah, we'd like to keep the five-year plan, Carl.
And I know I missed two other spots on the salary and expenses, but.
Do you have a slide for that?
For which one?
Oh, there is.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, so we have, we have a full, full-time HVAC air.
What's that, I'm sorry?
We have a full-time HVAC.
That's correct.
And we have a part-time plumber, because the other part-time is shared with the town.
That's correct.
Okay.
So half the salary is, is paid by the town and then the other half is.
Okay, so the expenses are really small.
That's correct.
You ha- do you have, do you, given the fact that we have those two employees, and I understand from, from the um principals, they're thrilled to have these people.
Mm-hmm.
Are we saving on maintenance agreements?
As far as subbing out the work?
Yeah.
Yeah, so uh I think we did a cost comparison.
That's what I'm getting at, what, what were the results?
The results, I, I believe for HVAC, I think uh the superintendent pulled up one company and then I, I asked him to pull up a different company. And within three years, it was doubled, what, it even?
It was significant, I can show it to you, I have it somewhere in my office, but for HVAC, the, the savings was significant. And we do also, you know, if they, if the town needs our HVAC, absolutely.
Correct, yeah, they do a lot of in-kind work, I, I keep a spreadsheet on that as well, if you'd like to see what, the amount of work that our HVAC tech and plumber before he started working for the town did for the town as well. Now, with, with having our, our in-house workers, when we purchase materials, there's no markup on them as well, so there's savings that way, so if I had advanced.
And that's in the twenty-five thousand.
No, so twenty, so this is just uh essentially for us, if we need tools, but if it's, if there's work to be done within the schools, we'll use their accounts.
Ah, okay, fine.
By having them here, and it's good just, I know I mentioned this last year, but having our HVAC tech and plumber here, they're common sense workers and I, I mean, they pull wires for IT, they do more than just what their trade is, so it's good to have a, a, a kind of a, I know we're a small group, but it's good to have us.
Do you have any question that they're kept busy?
Oh, I know they're kept busy, I see them all the time, so that's why, I put them to work, don't worry. Uh HVAC is all year round, especially right now, when you're in these swing, swing months when temperatures go up and down. There's a lot of permanent maintenance work that he can do, plumbing not so much, but now that he's working half with the town, believe me, he's busy. He's just installing a, a new water main for um uh that building, the Hammond Building in Onset. So he's busy, we make him busy, he just replaced uh pipes over at the multi-service center as well, uh they did work for the police station, they're doing work for the library, so they're, they're, they're kept very busy.
So even though we share the plumber, um you continue to supervise them even when they're not working for the school? Is that a fair statement?
Correct, yeah, so when they.
Or is Dave essentially take over that role?
Hmm, it it depends, I guess, right, I, so I, I know what those projects entail, I don't necessarily oversee them as far as giving them their approval, because it's not mine to say.
Do they have oversight?
As far as what, on the town side?
Yes.
I, I, I couldn't speak to that.
Okay, thank you.
I'd, I'd hope, I, I know that Dave and um, I believe his name is Justin, Justin Rideout with the, with the town, I don't know who that is, but I.
So do they put in requests to you to use them?
No, they just call them directly, but with, with the, with the plumber, it's different, right, so he's a town employee now.
Oh, he is.
Well, right, he's, well, no, he's still with the schools, but has a salary as, as a town, so.
Yeah, that's an allocation issue.
So he works for both the schools.
He's not an employee of both locations.
No, he's an employee of the schools, but.
Yeah, no, so he stays, so that was kind of the, in the logistics of everything, wanted him to stay with the schools, not that he has his own place over there, um.
I guess the central question, the simple question is, is sharing it working?
I mean, for plumbing, it has to work, right, they're paying half the salary for HVAC.
That wasn't my question, and has to work is different than it's working.
Yeah, it i- it is, there's a lot of like pros and cons, I guess, to it, like anything else.
It's been going on for years anyway.
Correct.
It's, it's not like, we, we just decided, it's been happening and I just kinda said, hey, we're having budget issues, Derek, can we somehow split this?
I'm not talking money now.
I, I understand, but, and it's always worked in the past, so I don't believe that, that it wouldn't work now.
Enough, thank you.
We'd like a thank you here and there, but that, that goes a long way, but that, that's about it. Everything besides that, yes, everything's working well, I've never but heads with anyone with the town over there at work or anything like that, they do good work, so.
Thank you, thank you, Derek.
Alright, thanks.
Okay, follow you? No. So let's go on to transportation. Alright, transportation, we have one slide here, so our transportation, uh it's almost two point nine million, you can see on this slide that we have a coordinator and a secretary, four hundred forty-seven thousand. We have thirty-three drivers, eleven monitors, one point four million uh for those folks. Now then we have these contracted, these are four runs that we have to contract out for special ed, going to different schools, different uh private, public um collaborative schools, uh eight hundred thousand, and also for foster and homeless that we um that we need to transport either in district or out of district, uh two hundred twenty thousand, and then a line for our, our fuel and parts supplies, physicals and things of that nature. So that's uh our overall budget for our, our transportation. Transportation, you know, it's, it's a year-round thing because of our summer programs, uh there's a lot of moving parts. The town has been super helpful as, as far as every year giving us two or three new buses, so we can cycle those new buses in and the old, um old buses out, they get a lot of use, um you know, thousands and thousands of miles, uh we, we certainly get our, our money's worth. Uh but it's great that we're able to continue that, that um, that cycle, so we, we get the new buses in.
Kristen, how does it work, the town employees fix the buses when they need a part to fix the buses? Is that the three hundred and thirteen thousand in part?
Yes, so we pay for the parts.
Okay, so they have to keep a separate inventory for the buses of parts versus other town vehicles?
Right, it's my understanding, and um we can confirm with Marie, our transportation director, but she works closely with uh primarily one to two mechanics in the garage, and they're working on our vehicles, so they're ordering the parts as they need them, and we're getting the invoices. Marie's reviewing them, she keeps, actually she keeps a, a great track of the parts that she buys for each bus, so by each bus, she'll know what she's had to replace, you know, looking at trends, and then um lets us know they're good to go to pay, and so that's, you know, so they work together on that.
Do the special ed bus drivers get any extra training over and above what a regular bus driver gets?
Just a, a little bit of training and working with some of the students, the, the disabilities, the students.
Colleagues, yes.
Yes.
But they're not entitled to see the IUD?
No, I am not concerned with any of that, I just wanna make sure, you know, when they might have a nurse on, I would hope the driver could be there as a backup type thing, that's all.
Okay, so um if we look at now, let's just keep going, so if we look at FY twenty-five, all of these cost centers for FY twenty-five uh compared to FY twenty-six, you can see the increases in, in some of them, some of them actually went down a little bit. But overall, um the FY twenty-six that we just presented to you um is an increase of a little bit over two million dollars. Now that is, that's before the offsets. Uh and the offsets are grants and circuit breaker, things like that, that, that we receive that we, we use to reduce this thirty-nine million dollar uh budget, and are we on the offsets, so if we go to the next slide.
Before we do that, I'm shocked to see transportation essentially level funding. How is that possible?
It's, it's sort of a balancing act between contract services and, and wages. And so in the past, we had increased wages, thinking that we increased those salary lines, thinking that we were going to have more bus drivers, and we have a bus driver shortage. So we've had to push them out to bid, so it's really just sort of balancing out, really our, our variables are the cost of the labor and the cost of the contract service. So we found that we had um over-budgeted for the labor on our own employees, so that's where that came down this year. And we're pretty, looking at the contract services, looking at this uh composition of students that we have and what we're paying this year, it's um, I base the budget next year as if those same students or are going to be riding vehicles. It's sort of a best, it's, it's a best guess.
But you're confident in that number?
Yes, on that one, yes, so.
Okay.
So if we take that thirty-nine million dollar uh budget and the next slide is the offset, so we take the thirty-nine, seven, seventeen, uh these are the anticipated offsets for the FY twenty-six uh budget. We have a two forty grant that we're able to use, that's, we're gonna use about one point four million dollars, circuit breaker, uh school nutrition grant that we're able to utilize, we'll use five hundred thousand dollars of Title One. We're receiving a career pathways grant um this year, fifty thousand, our pre-K revolving, we use that from tuitions for our um pair students that attend our preschool. Um Kenny Bento, that we take, that we have uh the Warren article at, at the town, town meetings, it transferred over to the schools, we use as an offset. And then there's our forty thousand dollars from the plumber. Uh so we use those offsets of about two point nine million, and that um drives down that thirty-nine million dollars to about thirty-six.
How many employees does Title One's five hundred thousand plus support?
It supports a portion of um the assistant superintendent and the administrative assistant of the superintendent's salary, so maybe, you know, a point, a one point oh, uh may, actually, but um it supports a portion of the principal and assistant principals at the elementary school. It supports the um the uh one, one point oh department chair at the elementary school and two pairs. So it's really three full positions and then it supports a portion of some others.
That's it? Wow.
But then Title One also has a lot of um curriculum materials in it, so this is just the part that is offsetting the the costs that you see, that you've seen in the budget today.
So what you're saying is, for some rea- that number, I remember when that number used to be much larger. So if that number keeps going down, the impact is, it's not like we can, in most cases, say, we don't need this person. It's an allocation of people primarily, so basically it would just fall to the LEA.
Yes.
Yeah, if we were to lose it, sure.
Yeah, and we may not lose it all, but I can see it going, continuing to go down.
I hope not.
Yeah, as I say to my tennis players, prayer is not a strategy.
Okay, so um, so thirty-six million that I just showed you after the offset, offsets, and we compare that to the FY twenty-five budget after the offsets of thirty-four point six million, um and the difference between them is two point one million dollars. That's the increase um of a level service budget that we just uh shared with you. Now, a couple things I just wanna share in addition. So these are, when you look at that, you know, what, what is um, what are the budget drivers for us? Clearly, number one, our salaries, and these, that one point eight million is, is um the increase in salaries for all of our staff, steps, lay. steps, lanes, and cola. So always people most expensive and certainly that shows here, pretty significant increase there. Out of district tuitions, we've discussed that. They're definitely a challenge for us, um, budget-wise. Chromebooks, every one of our students has a Chromebook, uh, very important for the education plan that we have for our, our district. And so we like to make sure that we keep them replaced and in good shape. Out of district transportation, uh, thirty thousand dollar, um, increase, correct?
Yes.
And, 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 um, again, um, significant impact on the budget. Then you can see right down the line, some of the other, um, pieces of the budget that, that are increased. But certainly, uh, the primary driver is that, is that salary. So that's that two million dollar increase, uh, before the offsets. There was also, in addition to those increases, there were some grants that we no longer will be receiving. And because of that, it, it impacts our budget. Esser, you remember the Esser from COVID, that's finally gone. And so we're a hundred and forty-five dollars, a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars less because of it. The IVAQ grant will be going away. We did receive some money from the state because of the shelters in Wareham, of a hundred fifty-nine thousand, which we will no longer receive any money. Uh, a grant, the tag grant was to help at the high school, but we have, uh, made some progress through MCAS on our scores and so they will no longer be receiving that support. And then our Student Opportunity Act grant will be going away. So that's five hundred forty-one thousand less that we will be receiving and, and that does have an impact on our budget. So all said and done, um, the level service would be two point one million dollar increase, or six point two four percent. Uh, we met with, we, you know, heard from the, the town, they'd like us at three point seven five percent. Uh, we're gonna do the work necessary to get there. Some of the things that, that, you know, we'll be watching, um, and, and we can adjust this budget for is out-of-district placements. That can, that can go down, you know, we can have students come back, we can have them move out of town, we can, all kinds of things, so that, that number can go up, it can go down, um, and the transportation that goes with it. So that can impact the budget, uh, one way or another. Utilities, we'll see how that plays out. Negotiations right now, we are, uh, we have three more bargaining units we need to negotiate with, so we don't know exactly where they're gonna land for FY twenty-six. So that's, um, something that we'll need to watch. And of course, student and staffing needs that can change over the course of the year, depending on what our students need for, uh, this year and next. And, uh, so that's generally, that's generally, I just wanted to share with you. We have, some of the principals talked about the cuts that we have made, um, over the years. You know, since I started, these are the, the positions that have been reduced in the school district. And we're, you know, we have, we have great staff here, they work very hard. I think our class sizes are a good level, um, and I'm hoping that we can, uh, keep them that way. So that's generally it. And happy to answer any questions, any additional.
Your discussions with the town, uh, I think Derek goes usually on the conservative side with money. But is he pretty optimistic or pessimistic for what the state's gonna do this year?
He, he's, um, he's, well, as far as chapter seventy, he, he doesn't know what, what's gonna happen. Nobody really knows what's gonna happen. Last year, I think we received sixty-seven thousand dollars in, in chapter seventy, uh, which was a disappointment. And I'm hop, hoping that because last year was a disappointment, this year won't be a disappointment and, and significant money will come in. But, um, I, you know, he, he's optimistic enough to say that, you know, that the town could probably sort of support us at three point seven five percent, which I think is, is pretty fair.
I think the upshot is eighty-five percent of the increase, uh, between this year and next year is salary increases.
Take a traction.
So, uh, and they have lots of leverage because they're highly educated, valuable, unionized employees. So to assume that, uh, future negotiations are gonna have any positive impact on reducing the cost is naive. So the bottom line is, we're gonna have to keep cutting employees until we can afford the ones we have. It's literally that simple.
You have to remember, when you cut one employee off, you usually have to cut two more off at the cost.
Say, takes two to pay for one.
Just so everybody knows, the prevailing, uh, feeling in the country, not just here, is that when I see it coming up, there'll be less money available. And it's, it's been, almost every agency has said that. And Derek knows that as well. We're very concerned about, uh, next year, what we're gonna see and what we're seeing. The governor right now is, uh, basically spent everything she could spend. And, uh, we're not sure what programs she's gonna bring forward. It's really difficult when you have no idea what's gonna happen.
Right.
Not sure you want to.
So, but thank you guys for being here.
You can send me my check.
I will.
We'll double what we paid the last year.
I was having a last year's double.
That, that's all we got?
If there's a motion to adjourn.
Some move, or a second.